I'd like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole to Order. If the clerk would please call the rule.
Mr. Bowersox Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Jacobson.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Ms. Marlin.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Smythe.
Here.
Ms. Stevenson.
Present.
Mayor Pressing.
Here.
Are there any additions to the agenda? Staff report. Staff report I have is for the sanitary sewer laterals in the public right-of-way. Brad?
Thank you. My name is Brad Bennett. I'm a senior civil engineer here at the Public Works Department. What we're here to discuss this evening are some research and additional information we have to present council regarding sanitary sewer repairs within the public right-of-way. What you've got included in your memo, I'm just going to kind of go through briefly, and I'll be glad to open it up to any questions that council has regarding it. But the first part of the memo just kind of covers a little bit of the background, how the initial pavement reimbursement program was established, how the initial reimbursement limit was 50 percent with a max or a cap as far as the city's reimbursement of $3,000. And then in March 2013, the initial ordinance was repealed and a new ordinance established that increased the amount of reimbursement up to 75 percent and the maximum amount of city reimbursement up to $4,500. And that's kind of where we stand today. I will point out, so far this year, we've had four people participate in the sewer lateral pavement reimbursement program, two of them under the new 75 percent reimbursement limit. And we spent about $9,800 a year to date for the pavement reimbursement program. There were three things that city council asked the Public Works Department to do or research regarding sewer lateral repairs within the right-of-way. One was to research what policies other central Illinois communities had regarding sanitary sewer laterals within the right-of-way, to look at maintenance practices and repair programs for other Illinois communities that did take ownership of the sanitary sewer laterals within the public right-of-way. And then, you know, finally, looking at the different options available to the city regarding repairs to sanitary laterals within the public right-of-way, kind of looking at the pros and cons of them, as well as what the cost to the city of each of those would be. So with that, I'll kind of dive into each of the three items. The first was, we did do a survey of other communities and their sanitary lateral policies. We sent out surveys, they were done electronically, to 13 communities, which included Champaign, Savoy, Rantoul, Danville, Decatur, Springfield, Forsyth, Peoria, Bloomington, Normal, Charleston, Mattoon, and the Urbana-Champaign sanitary district. They cover the unincorporated areas outside the city. Twelve of the agencies responded to the survey. The only one that didn't was Mattoon. And a summary of the results of the survey were included in the appendix. For all 12 agencies that responded, all of them had the policy similar to our current policy, that the lateral is the responsibility of the property owner within the public right-of-way. We did discover that four of the agencies had a partial reimbursement program for sewer lateral repairs regarding the pavement replacement. There was one community, which was Springfield, Illinois, that offered a 100 percent reimbursement program for property owners that had to repair their sewer laterals. So five out of the 12 had some sort of pavement reimbursement program similar to what we have, though it varied in what percentage they offered compared to us. The seven remaining agencies didn't offer any reimbursement program or any assistance for their property owners regarding the sewer lateral repairs. So kind of in summary, you know, I think our policy is pretty consistent with the other communities around us. In fact, there's only one community that had a more generous reimbursement policy than what we had, and that was Springfield, Illinois. So I do think, you know, our policy is pretty consistent with the other units of government around us. Moving on to the second part, these were Illinois communities that owned the laterals within the public right-of-way. Through some research and talking to other public works agencies, we initially identified seven communities that we thought might own the lateral within the public right-of-way. So we sent out surveys to those. Those communities were Carbondale, Rock Island, Morton, Addison, Galesburg, Pekin, and Schaumburg. Five of the communities responded to the survey. On all these, I did try to call and email and get results, sometimes unsuccessfully. Two of the communities didn't respond, and those were Morton and Pekin. And once again, the summary of those results is in Appendix B. But based on the results, there were two communities that we thought might take ownership responsibility in the right-of-way that didn't. Both Galesburg and Rock Island indicated that it was their policy that the lateral is responsibility of the property owner. Though I'll point out, Rock Island did offer an insurance program for their sewer laterals, and it was very similar to the one that American Water offers here locally. It's $9 a month. It's a voluntary program. And I'll point out, too, that that did cover the entire lateral, not just the portion within the right-of-way. But it is a voluntary charge that Rock Island offers, and it's added on to the property owner's sewer bill if they elect to participate in that program. We did find out that Carbondale and Schaumburg and Addison all did take ownership, so we were able to find three Illinois communities that did. And we found out, all three of those communities, you know, did have, you know, cleanouts on the laterals. It varied in whether they were required or not. Both Carbondale and Schaumburg required the cleanouts at the property lines for access and maintenance. In Addison, it was kind of on a problem-based basis, they would install a lateral, that's something the city would do when there was a backup problem. All three communities cleaned and televised and repaired sewer laterals within the public right-of-way. Point out that Carbondale and Schaumburg did it on a request basis. When a property owner requested it or had a problem with their lateral, they would get out there and clean and televise. At Addison, they would go out and clean and televise twice a year for the lines that they had installed cleanouts on, so the kind of the problematic lines, they would clean and televise twice a year. We did look at the sewer rates for the communities that had to take an ownership, and they were higher than what our current sewer rates are. Both Addison and Carbondale included treatment costs in their sewer fees or in their base sewer fees. So their rates were $4.06 and $3.54 per 100 cubic feet of water usage, which Urbana is now currently is $2.50 per 100 cubic feet. And then Schaumburg, because they have a sanitary district like us, they had a, you know, their charge was just for a collection system, and theirs was $1.11 per 100 cubic foot versus our collection system only cost of 97 per 100 cubic feet. So it did appear that communities that took over the responsibility of maintaining laterals within the right-of-way did have higher fees than what we presently do here, where we do not take that responsibility. So that kind of concludes the surveys that we did. For the next portion of it, we did come up with five options for the council to consider. I'll go through them briefly and talk about the cost with each of them. But one of the things we're doing tonight is seeking direction from council on how you want us to pursue, you know, which option you want us to pursue and look at implementing. But like I said, I'll briefly go through all five. The first one is the no action. That's to leave the sewer reimbursement program where it's at at its current level with the 75 percent reimbursement with a maximum amount of 4,500. Obviously, there would be no cost, because that's what the current program's set at. Option two would be increasing the pavement reimbursement to 100 percent. It would go from 75 up to 100 percent, and the maximum reimbursement amount that the city would pay would be $6,000. There would be a cost associated with this. We would have to look at raising the sewer benefit tax, $2.10 for an average residential unit per year. So, and once again, it would be a reimbursement program. The city would, you know, reimburse the property owner for the repair after it was made. We did check with our legal staff, and because of prevailing wage rates, we can't cut the check directly to the contractor. Illinois law requires that any infrastructure work, which laterals would be qualified as a pipe infrastructure work, have to be paid at prevailing wage rates, which most of the local sewer repair contractors don't pay. Option three would be that the city repair the laterals within the public right-of-way. Under this option, the city still does not take ownership of the laterals. Under this option, the city would just dig up and fix any laterals that were blocked to the point of being inoperable. So the property owner would still be responsible for cleaning and removing blockages from the pipe if the pipe had become collapsed or the blockage so severe that with current sewer cleaning technology and the best, you know, techniques to remove those, then the city would step in and repair the pipe. The city would take care of the entire repair. The property owner, you know, would not be involved in the repair itself. A city contractor would do the work, and that city contractor would be supervised by public work staff. We anticipate that the cost of that option would be similar to what it would be for the option of increasing the pavement reimbursement program to 100 percent. You know, one of the disadvantages is we'd have to set certain conditions for the repairs. And the three conditions I outlined that we would make the repairs under would be, you know, that there was a sinkhole that formed in the street or sidewalk that was creating a hazard to the public. We would, at that point, initiate a repair. Like I mentioned earlier, if the backup in a sanitary sewer lateral occurred that could not be cleared by hydrojetting, rotting, or root cutting, we would have to verify that it was indeed a blockage and every effort hadn't been made to successfully clear it. And the third situation where we would step in and make that repair would be if televising the sewer lateral showed that a collapse in the pipe had occurred. I'll point out, under this, you know, that root intrusion would not be covered. We consider that a maintenance item that, you know, through either chemical treatment or by cutting the roots, that the service lateral can continue to be utilized and not necessarily require a replacement. Moving on to option four, we looked at the city ownership of sewer laterals within the public right-of-way. Under this option, the city would assume ownership of all the sewer lateral within the public right-of-way. Our GIS staff came up with an estimate that there are approximately 6,660 laterals within the public right-of-way. It amounts to about 38 miles of sewer pipe that we would have to take over and operate. Under this option, you know, obviously, the city ordinance would have to be revised, because it currently reads the property owner has the responsibility of maintaining the entire lateral. I'll point out, with this option, you know, the city has to go out and do additional cleaning and televising of the laterals. The Environmental Protection Agency here in the state of Illinois has been pushing communities to adopt what they call CMOM, which is Capacity Management Operation and Maintenance, which is a set of best management practices for collection systems. Basically, it amounts to, they want you to take a proactive approach. You know, they want you to get out there and clean and televise your pipes and identify problems before they lead to backups and take actions to prevent any sewer backups from occurring. So we feel, under those regulations, that, you know, we could not neglect the laterals. We would have to have some program similar to what we do for our public sewer system of, you know, systematically cleaning and televising and repairing any problems with it. So one of the things we've included in that program is that, you know, we would acquire a cleanout to be installed at the property line, so we would have access to the portion of the sanitary lateral that would be under the ownership responsibilities of the city. You know, we estimate the cost of installing a lateral at about $1,000 apiece. We did confirm that with our contractor that currently does our sewer work. They agreed, they thought that would be the cost of doing it. So you can imagine, you know, 6,660 cleanouts having to be installed at $1,000 apiece is a pretty significant cost. So what it shows in Table 1 is what we estimate the annual cost for the city's operation maintenance of taking over the sewer laterals. And you see, it comes up to $828,000 per year. Right now, we're currently spending about $1.2 to $1.3 million on our collection system. So you see, it would be a significant increase in our cost. I'll point out, most of the cost is in the bond issue we looked at for the cleanout installation, as well as purchasing the initial jetter truck to do the lateral cleaning. A 20-year bond that would have an annual debt service cost of $455,000. We've also got repairs and replacement of laterals budgeted at $200,000, hiring additional staff for the cleaning and televising at $139,000. That would be two staff positions. And finally, some equipment for the cleaning and televising, buying different jetter heads, replacement parts for pumps and the camera at $34,000. So when you break the cost down, it would increase sewer benefit tax by $70.80 per year per property owner, for an average residential property owner. That would result in about a 65 increase, 65 percent increase in the current sewer benefit tax. I will point out that, you know, after the bond debt service was paid off after 20 years, that would drop substantially. You'd be eliminating or essentially cutting almost in half the fee, but for the first 20 years, because of the bond service, debt service on that, it would be a pretty significant increase in sewer benefit fee. And finally, the lateral insurance program. This is a program I mentioned earlier that Rock Island offers. They actually run it through their Public Works Department. American Water offers this program locally, but allows property owners to voluntarily participate in a program for a monthly cost where their lateral is insured. The American Water program here in town, I think it's $9 a month, and it covers up to $8,000 of the cost of the sewer repair. And like I said, that's something that's currently available to all property owners here in Urbana, if they choose so to participate in it. And then I wanted to mention a little bit about our public outreach efforts. That was some direction council had gave us back, I think, in January. We did finish the tri-fold brochure, which was attached with your documents, as a way to hopefully engage and educate the public as far as what to do when they have a sewer backup and make them aware of the pavement reimbursement program. We are in the process of handing those out whenever we respond to a sewer backup, as well as issuing right-of-way permits for work on sewers. So hopefully, that'll do a better job of informing the public of what's available as far as financial assistance regarding sewer repairs. So that's kind of all I had. I guess at this point, I'll open up to questions, or if Bill had some comments he wanted to make.
Brandon?
Yeah, thanks for all this info. This is really helpful. One thing that I couldn't quite understand was, with option four, if we were to take city ownership of sewer laterals within the public right-of-way, you described this significant budget and having to do televising and inspection and all kinds of routine maintenance to meet the CMOM best management practices and for NPDES. Do the other cities that do take public ownership, are they doing a good job with their CMOM best management practices and doing this level of effort? Or are they just skirting under the radar until someone comes along and enforces it better?
Well, you are correct. The other three communities we surveyed, none of them had a systematic cleaning and televising program. You know, the CMOM is a relatively new requirement. I'll point out, it doesn't actually specify levels that you have to do your cleaning and televising. It doesn't say you have to do it every five years or 10-year cycle. It kind of leaves it open to the community based on your financial constraints, but it does require that you do have a cleaning and televising program.
Interesting.
So, and it's all about enforcement. It could be, too, that since it is a relatively new requirement that's being rolled out in the wastewater permits, that it hasn't really been actively enforced yet.
Okay. Yeah, it was interesting, in all their surveys, when you asked that question, did you have to hire additional staff to do all this? They all said no. But, I mean, here, it seems like this would require additional staff if we're at least going to do a systematic inspection program, even if we make it less often.
Yeah, you're correct. And one thing to point out with the other programs, they've been around for quite a long time. Some of them dated back to the founding of the sanitary district or their sewer program. So, you know, when they reply they didn't hire anyone, it could be that, because when they started up initially, you know, dozens or decades ago, years ago, that, you know, at that time, they staffed up for it.
Okay. And my final question, between option two and option three, both of those options cost the same, that's a very small, you know, like 2 percent increase in our sewer benefit tax, but they work quite differently, whether we just reimburse for all the pavement cost and charge residents $2 a year more, or whether we make the repairs ourselves and take over doing the repairs. Between two and three, which, from your perspective, makes the most sense administratively?
Well, I think they both have their pros and cons. I mean, one of the advantages of option number two, it provides the property owner with more flexibility. They can decide kind of how much of the pipe repair they want to do if they want to repair the pipe, because it's got roots in it. There's a lot more flexibility on their end. The disadvantage of option two is they essentially have to front the money, because it is a reimbursement program. Generally, we can turn around a reimbursement request within two or three weeks. So I have had property owners that were able to charge that amount on their credit card and be able to pay it off before the balance was due. But, I mean, the major disadvantage, I would say, of option two is the fact that it is a reimbursement, so the property owner has to pay the money upfront. But like I said, the advantage of it is it does provide the most flexibility. If they want to replace the entire pipe within the width of the street, they can use what pavement reimbursement money they get to offset the cost of that. Option two, its advantage, the property owner doesn't have to pay anything, but it also has the least amount of flexibility. We will dig it up and fix it where it's broke, but that's it.
Okay.
So if you want to replace the entire line under the street, you have to do that separately by yourself.
Right.
Entirely at your own expense.
Great.
And just a little more clarification. On option three, do we, to do our job inspecting and repairing our segment, or the segment we're responsible for in option three, would we have to install at the property line or at the boundary line, install cleanouts?
No, we would not. Under option three, the property owner still has to hire the sewer cleaning service to come out and attempt to remove the blockage. Usually, as part of that process, if they can't get through the blockage, they can give us a footage count to where the blockage is. We can mark off on the street and then know where to dig.
Okay. But we would pay prevailing wage for all the work? If under option three, we did the repairs.
Correct.
Ourselves, we'd then be paying prevailing?
And that is something to point out. That would have an impact on local sewer contractors, because they currently do that work. Most of the sewer contractors that repair laterals for property owners here in town would not be able to, you know, bid on the city work. So essentially, you'd be kind of transferring the work from one type of contractors to another. I mean, move from like a, you know, some of the local contractors like Mr. Ruder, Roder Ruder, DNS, Stevens, that do a lot of the sewer lateral repairs, you know, to, you know, more of a union-type contractor like a Deuce, a Cross, a Stark, Central Illinois Tile, those type of contractors that are able to bid on the work that the city does.
Okay. Thank you.
Diane, and then Eric?
Just a couple of questions. On option three, would there be a scenario where an owner would be responsible for repairing one part of the pipe, and then the city is in there doing another pipe? So the owner is coordinating, you're dealing with two different repair companies?
I wouldn't envision that, because we would just repair where the actual blockage was. You could run into a scenario where the city would go in and fix the blockage and essentially restore the pipe to service, but the homeowner might decide, well, the pipe's kind of old or there's a lot of roots going through it, I really want to replace the entire pipe. So you could run into a situation where the city makes a repair, gets the service working again, but the homeowner comes back at a later time, which could be a short period of time after we complete our repair, and, you know, either uses a trenchless technology or just digs the pipe up and replaces the remainder of the section that we didn't touch.
And then I asked you this question earlier today, but I think it's important information for the public. You said that there were about 6,660 sewer laterals in the public right-of-way, and that's out of a little over 10,000. So about 2/3 of the properties in Urbana have laterals in the right-of-way, and about 1/3 do not.
Correct.
So whatever program we're talking about tonight, it would be for the benefit of just those 2/3 of the total property owners?
Yeah, the 2/3 that had laterals within the right-of-way, you know, would get the benefit from, I guess, options two through five, whereas everyone would pay, you know, everybody's sewer bill would go up. So it would be 1/3 that were paying extra but not receiving any benefit.
And on this insurance program, it's currently about $9 a year, and based on the literature from, a month, sorry, a month. Based on the literature from American, Illinois American Water, it would provide $4,000 toward line repair and $4,000 towards street repair, and that could be used then to supplement whatever program the city had in place as well.
Correct. The pavement reimbursement program doesn't have any income limitations, and there's no other limitations as far as, you know, if you're receiving compensation from an insurance company for part of it. So they'd be able to use, participate in both, the insurance and the sewer lateral reimbursement program.
And one last question. The insurance program would serve everyone who has a sewer lateral. It doesn't matter where your pipes are, right?
Correct. It covers the line from the house all the way to the connection to the city sewer main.
Whether it's front or back or side?
Correct.
Okay.
Eric?
Yeah, I may have been reading, I may have been looking up the wrong place. I somehow got the idea that the water company insurance didn't cover pavement, but you're saying it does recover.
Up to $4,000.
Up to $4,000.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Go ahead, Dennis.
Did you get information about how many people in the communities that provided just the insurance coverage? How many people actually participate in those communities?
That I did not. I could check with Rock Island and see if they have some statistics on what sort of participation they're getting.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's like the thing that we're, you know, any kind of insurance that you're not obliged to take, you know, like life insurance. Some people gamble more than others, and some people have really good lines, and some people have really bad lines. So, okay.
Eric, and then Robert?
But it does, just to follow up on the question about the insurance, it looks to me as though for a couple of dollars a year more in the sewer benefits tax, that we can provide about as much coverage as you get from the insurance company for $100 a year.
Well, it's important to point out, the lateral insurance covers all the way up to the house, where ours would end at the property line.
Ah, okay.
So their program actually covers more pipe than what we do, or would. But you're correct, the amount that they're charging per month would be less than what we would have to increase the sewer benefits tax for option number four.
For option four, right.
But like I said, I just want to point out with that, their program covers all the way up to the house, which option four would not cover.
Robert?
I just wanted to point out, while the public said that they didn't mind dealing with their own, but on the other hand, it's the city's responsibility from their property line out. So it seems as if, if the city were to assume their responsibility, it would be advantageous for the city to do that, so that they comply with the best practices that are applied to sewer configurations and would be proactive as a city in terms of dealing with potential problems in the future. I bring this up not only because of the aging infrastructure that we have, but also, we are a tree city. And the fact that we are a tree city, that's the, for that aging infrastructure, that's its nemesis, the roots and what gets into them. And we all know, well, maybe we all don't know, but that particular methodology that was used back then promotes the invasion of roots and causes significant problems in the 30, 40-year range of existence because of movement and changes in, you know, structure underneath. So it would solve a big problem for the communities, as well bring us up a notch on our infrastructure development throughout the city, that we can rely on it more effectively in the future. So I think the amount of dollars we're talking about here, if, for example, we said $70.80 per year, if you did it in insurance, you're talking about 108. So, hey, come on. I would prefer playing... I would prefer paying $70.80 compared to $108. So, you know, it's, I think it's a, it's a golden opportunity for the city to move forward and be more progressive in terms of what we provide for our community. I recognize that some people that have laterals in their backyard, they were putting some money up front, but overall, the greater good served here would be the people that potentially could not upfront that amount of money, you know, to get the job done irregardless. I know it may cause some issues with the unions, maybe, I don't know, because the city would take it over. But if yours, you know, you can deal with that battle. That's not a problem, in my opinion.
All right. Anyone else? Diane?
You're estimating that about 14 repairs annually. Has it generally been running 10 to 15 repairs for public right-of-way in the last few years? Is that a pretty steady number?
Yeah, I mean, we've actually been running below the 14 repair per level a year.
So out of the 6,660 pipes, it's about 14 a year, 10 to 15 a year?
Well, that, yeah, I mean, that's, that's based on, you know, the emergency-type repair where you're digging down to fix a blockage. I mean, if you're going to go in and try to fix all the sewer lateral lines that had root intrusion, you know, or relatively minor structural issues, I mean, you'd be talking about hundreds, if not thousands, of repairs, which is one of the reasons why, under option number three, we set a specific set of circumstances where we would repair the pipe.
But in terms of a homeowner faced with digging up the street to fix a sewer line, then it's the 10 to 15, the emergencies?
Yes.
Okay.
That's pretty consistent with what we've seen for, since 2008.
Dennis?
So I guess I want to kind of ask a question kind of off of Eric Jacobson's question. We were talking about the use of insurance to provide protection for people who are interested in it. Is there a scenario that the, that the city could do a group insurance plan for all inhabitants of the city who have sewers? And that there would be, because of the quantity of people who could be insured, who would get a very particularly good rate from some company, that would then, we would pass whatever the fee is per household on equally spread throughout the entire community? I mean, is that another scenario that we could look at? Is it likely that there would be a insurance company that would take us on as a client? And it would probably, because of the volume of the enrollment, we would probably get really good rates?
Well, I did contact American Water. They would be interested and are already offering it in this area, but they do have a program where they'll partner with the community to help additionally advertise and encourage people to participate in it. I'll point out, Rock Island actually runs their own program, their own lateral insurance program. It's through the city. You actually sign up through the city and it's part of your water and sewer bill. So, I mean, it is, it is possible to do. I'm not sure about, you know, what would specifically be involved with trying to get a large insurer to, you know, provide us a group rate. It might have to be something that we collected the money as part of the sewer benefit tax and then the residents, you know, we'd have to administer the lateral insurance program through city staff.
Right, right. But that would be a thought because if you could say that we pretty much statistically only have 14 cases a year and we've got a clientele of, you know, 45,000 or people in the, you know, community that have, you know, sewer lines or whatever, or however many households it is, we should probably get a really good rate. And, you know, and it wouldn't be as high as $9 a month, which is pretty expensive for anybody. By the time you've gone through like seven years of paying your insurance, you probably could, you know, have fixed your line. So that, I mean, paying insurance, you know, on a line that, you know, hasn't failed is just money down the drain. So could you look into the process of, you know, community insurance? I mean, is it, you know, I don't know if anybody offers it, but if there were a way of writing such a program, that could be a savings for everybody. And then whatever problem you had, if it required repair, no matter whether it was in the middle of the street or, you know, well, I guess it would just be, you know, anything that was underneath the ground, you know, in the right-of-way, would all be covered?
Brandon, did you have something else?
Yeah, I mean, I guess my comment on this is after reading these, hearing your answers, to me, if we're going to make any increase in what the city does, option three is the one that, to me, makes the most sense. I guess my feeling is that option four would just be the city taking on too much risk in terms of enforcement and regulations. Between two and three, I think the huge benefit of option three is that residents don't have to front the money for this construction. I think especially in Urbana where we have so many neighborhoods with so many low-income people, it is such a hardship to have to come up with thousands of thousands and thousands of dollars to pay for something, even if you are going to get a check back for it in a few weeks. That is such a hardship on residents that, to me, option three, where the city simply takes this on, in, if there's an issue in the public right-of-way section of the pipe, that makes the most sense to me, if we're going to do some increase at all. We also might say that this is a time when it's hard for people to afford even $2 a year. I know that's only about 20 cents a month, but even so, $2 a year at a time when it's not easy for people to make their bills already is a hardship. And so I think you could make a case for not doing anything at all for option one. But I think option three, in my mind, presents the best mix of balancing costs, people's needs, and what residents can afford.
Eric and Charlie?
Now, am I right that, under option three, I guess, under all of these options, the owner would be responsible for, on their own property?
Correct.
As long as they, you're not going up to the public right-of-way. I guess the only comment that I would make, I mean, I think that option three is reasonable. I even think that option four is reasonable, but it's a, you know, it's a much larger jump from what we're doing. And the perception that we're increasing a fee by that much for something that people are going to need once in every 20, you know, the average homeowner is going to need once in every 20 years. I think, I think the perception of that, I think people would balk at that, in terms of the perception, although it probably wouldn't be bad policy. So I guess that the only other thing I would point out is that unfortunately, since we can't print money, people will have to pay more for the greater, for having the city take on more responsibility.
Charlie?
I guess I'm very uncomfortable with option four because it's a $71 a year increase in essentially a tax to our residents. And it only benefits two-thirds of the households. If it were to benefit all of the households, like some, like the other things that we do like this, I'd be far more comfortable. And I've already stated that I think the lateral, given the historic way that developments have been built, how laterals have been dealt with, it's a utility that you pay to the connection where the city owns the pipe. If it happens to be under the right-of-way, that's where it just happens to be. If it's in your backyard, that's where it happens to be. So I'm totally comfortable with options two and three. In fact, my version of this that I had suggested to staff was that we pay for any surface repairs of, in the right-of-way of sidewalk or street if the owner repaired the lateral using a technique that used as much underground approach as possible, you know, the sewer lining or the pipe bursting techniques, so that you have to make minimal cuts in the pavement. So actually, option, the no option, option one, the $4,500 reimbursement basically lets you do just that. That's probably enough money to cover, except in maybe an extraordinary case, a four-by-six hole in the, in the concrete in the street and the sidewalk repair. But I'd be willing to extend that to $6,000, which is what option two does, if a person, if a homeowner were to actually do the pipe bursting or underground approach as much as possible, if that was, you know, assuming that was the, that was doable. The $6,000 option is nice when, when, in fact, you can't do one of those other techniques. You need a little more money to cover the cost of what, to me, are more the city responsibility, sidewalks and streets, not the lateral itself. So I'm comfortable with options one, two, and three as they're, as they're put together. I think $2 in some sense a year, I can justify that only benefiting, you know, two-thirds of the people. It's not much for the public good. I can't support $71 a year.
Robert?
Is that reasonable, $6,000 to do pipe bursting?
I mean, it depends on conditions it's done under. The $6,000 would cover the surface restoration. So if you had to dig the hole out in the street where it connected to the city main at, that's what would be eligible for the pavement reimbursement.
So what would, what would a theoretical cost be for a blockage like under the sidewalk and you busted it out and put it to the main?
I mean, I could tell you, based on our own sewer lining, I mean, in this last contract, we were paying $21 a linear foot for cured-and-placed lining. That was for an eight, for an eight-inch diameter pipe.
Okay.
So we haven't done any pipe bursting here in the city, so I can't give you a price that the city's paid for it.
And the applications that you've seen in this area, would the lining be more applicable?
Yeah, I mean, cured-and-placed lining, assuming the pipe is open, I mean, that's the one big condition for both pipe bursting and cured-and-placed lining is the pipe has to be open enough where you can get the equipment through it to complete the process. So if you've got a collapsed or a severely, you know, blocked pipe with roots or debris, you still might have to dig it up to get it, you know, open enough to get the equipment through to be able to do the lining. But the cured-and-placed lining, I mean, you can complete the whole repair without removing any pavement. I mean, it is a really slick process and, you know, I think it does save money of not having to cut open the street. And that's not even including the disruption to the public from having the street closed while the pavement is restored. So it is a neat option, but it isn't a silver bullet either. You can't use it for every single type of repair.
But numerically, in terms of the statistical probabilities, it's reasonable? The number we have to do per year, for example?
As far as the 10 to 15 repairs per year?
Hmm.
Yeah, and that's based on historical data that we have. I mean, it could change as we move forward, but based on the data we have.
Dennis?
Yeah, okay. So I was thinking about these options again, and I guess, I guess in a certain sense, if we go with, with option two or three, where the city either reimburses or just straight out makes the repair that's under the street, so that if that happens, you as a property owner really don't have to deal with the cost because the city's going to be handling it.
Correct.
In a way, that is an insurance policy for the, everybody in the city at $2.10 a year. That's very reasonable. So these two options are what I favor. Because if you've got a problem and it's in the street, well, all right, the city's going to do it. Now, you'll either be reimbursed right away or you'll just be paying for it, but the cost is the same. That's a really good insurance policy. And so I think that's pretty cool.
Before we decide what we're going to ask staff to do, Rex Bradfield and Reverend Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood wanted to speak to us. And then Bishop King James Underwood didn't want to speak, but wanted to have his position entered into record that he has concerns of the outcome of the city right-of-way sewer laterals. So Rex Bradfield, and if you'd state your name, address, and limit your comments to five minutes, and then Dr., Reverend Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood the same.
Rex Bradfield, 2101 and a half Pond Street, Urbana, Illinois. I think we're going real good guns here, don't you guys? I think this is right on track. Diane, something that you mentioned that the council might consider is, for the ones that are in the backyard like we have, maybe you can combine some type of insurance for those people to make it an option if they want to cover their lateral in the backyard or from their house to the property line out to the street right-of-way. Maybe that's something you can combine into some, you know, some form of the final product on there. The other things that I had that I just wanted to mention was, I'm right with you, Charlie. I think, I think the option of allowing other, other types of construction and reimbursing people for that, I think that's two thumbs up and credit to Roger. But I think that's a great idea. And to look at those kind of costs and see what it is. So you're just not, the way the ordinance is written right now, it says concrete and aggregate and things like that. And maybe some of those other things won't fall into that and all of a sudden that falls over to the property owner having to become responsible for something like that. Third thing is, Mr. Bowersock, you, you mentioned that it's hard for somebody to put up all that money. I mentioned in one of my talks here to you about a voucher, you know, where the city says, okay, we approve of everything that's going on. It's going to take us three weeks to pay, but simply a letter of that voucher might be enough for the people to go to the banks and the banks say, okay, they're going to get their money. And the banks may front the money up right then based on the city making the commitment that we approve of all this. I don't know what the legal ramifications of that are, but it seems like something you might explore on there. I like the direction this is going. I think you guys are on the right track. I think that the final option is going to, whatever the final solution is going to be, is probably a combination of two and three and maybe the insurance. You're, Dennis, your thoughts on insurance were an interesting thought when you looked at it. You wonder if that's not a possibility. But like you say, after a while, then it becomes something that may be not so attractive after a number of years. But that's an interesting thought. But I like the idea of making maybe insurance available to those of us who don't have that problem out front, but we do have it out back and maybe we want some help with that. And maybe the city can do something in the overall package that says, okay, it's going to be $2 a month for all these other things out here, and if you choose to, we'll help you, but it's going to cost you a little bit more. Make a choice. The last thing I wanted to just bounce off of Bill and everybody is, I think the most important thing about these service laterals that are under the street is that the city controls them so that they're always available to whomever uses that property for whatever. And when it looks to me like if you're turning that over to the property owner, that connection is the most important thing for the development of that land and it has to be good. And if that hurts the development of the land because it's not properly maintained, it's hard to go back on. Somebody's just sold the property or you find something out like that. I'd like to see something in here where the ordinance is written such that, that you guys control that thing, whether you own it or not, you really have control to make sure that it's always in good shape. What do you think, Bill?
We already do own the connection. So the connection is city responsibility.
I guess I'm using the wrong thing. The, the service lateral that gets up to the, up to the property line, the one that's built with a subdivision, that one there.
Okay.
It seems to me like that's just as important as that one out, out in the street. In my eyes, it's even more important because if it's in good shape, that means that whoever buys that lot and no matter what they do, they're not going to have to go dig up the street if it's in good order.
Our response is, I know in new subdivisions, those sewer laterals from the public sewer to the property line are inspected. We do televise our lines too before we accept them. Typically, we'll look up the lateral, granted, it's not all the way to the property line.
Right.
So there is a reasonable amount of control, plus we're using materials today that are more durable, less likely for roots to intrude than in the past. So new construction, I have a higher level of confidence in for long-term
Than the old.
You know, functioning, functionality than
And it's the old ones that I wonder if there shouldn't be something where you, you sort of gain control over those things so that you prevent them from unnecessarily digging up the street by saying, you know, fellas, let's get a hold of this right now before something else happens. And I really like that. I compliment you guys. You're I compliment you guys, you're really right on the right track, all the questions that were asked. The one comment I do have is, and Erica, I just had work done on my water main, the valve went bad. And they paid for that, they said, we pay for everything to the valve, except Brad said that they're paying $4,000 for stuff out in the street.
That's for the sewer lateral program, not the water. It's a separate, there's two separate types.
Ah, I misunderstood you, I'm sorry. Yeah. Did you misunderstand him too?
I don't think so, unless I'm misunderstanding down.
Well, that'll confuse everything. Okay, so, I just leave it open to you guys. Anybody else want to pick my brain for anything, or whatever? Yes?
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna, I've done, you know, tried to figure out some numbers here. $108 a year, which is the insurance program, which does include your, you know, up to eight, you know, $4,000 and $4,000. You can, you know, the sewer lining, 75 feet is your typical length, maybe 85 feet and some, some runs out into the street. Mine's 85 feet, I know that.
Depends on.
Right, yeah, I've got, I'm 10 feet into, and under the street. I can do the sewer lining for a couple thousand if it's, you know, if it's eligible, because they don't have to tear up anything.
Right.
If I have to cut a hole in the sidewalk or the road, that's the part that gets expensive. You know, so, so at $109 a year, I can, I can, you know, do a $3,000 repair that'll be good for 50 to 100 years. Insurance, that's $108 for 28 years.
Sure.
So, you know, if I were paying that for 50 or 100 years, I'd be paying a lot more into it than, than just paying it and getting it over with.
Yeah.
You know, so, so I'm not sure that insurance is necessarily the way to go.
No.
Though it does cover your water pipe at the same time.
Right.
So, that's another, the thing, my, my, my perspective on this is for the city to basically use these new, new techniques that require minimal cutting.
Yes.
Okay, and if you're on the other side of the street, you can do completely underground, and maybe you have to, you're a hole in the right-of-way.
Right.
Maybe you just, you mess up the sidewalk, you might mess up the curb a little bit, but minimal damage to the street and sidewalk, using pipe bursting or, or if your connection is in the middle of the street and you don't have a manhole there, you're going to have to cut a four-by-six hole in the concrete, and that's where your money's going to cost.
Right.
You know, that's $2,000 to $4,000 of repair. But again, with the $4,500 option or the $6,000 option, we cover, we cover that expense.
Yeah, the way, if I read the ordinance right, the way that you guys passed it the other night though, it just said pavement and gravel, or the aggregate and concrete, is that correct?
That's, that's still right, yes. It's the pavement part. The lateral itself is still the homeowner's responsibility.
But what I'm saying is, is to, is to alter that a little bit so that it also encourages the homeowner to, to try and use some of these other things if, if it's cost-effective, and that's what you're saying right now, is first, what you're looking at, maybe it isn't cost-effective.
Yeah, I would be willing to pay all of the costs for the repair of right-of-way that's on the city, except for the actual cost of the lateral itself part.
Okay.
Any other questions for Rex, Diane?
Actually, it was for Brad or Bill. This, this $2.10 a year, is that a fixed amount, or is that based on water usage? Just to clarify.
It would be based on water usage?
On the 7,000 gallons a month?
Yeah, the $2.10 is for a residential, you know, property that uses 7,000 gallons a month, which is a typical residential usage. If you use 14,000 gallons per month, you'd pay double that, so it's worth all.
Well, and I checked my water bill, and last month it was, we used 3,000 gallons, so it would actually be a dollar a year. So, so it's, it depends on water usage, okay.
Wait until you water your lawn.
We don't water our lawn.
That's the, that's the number in the middle, okay, the water and lawn thing.
Go ahead, Dennis.
And this is for Bill. Thanks, though. Thanks, Rex.
Am I done?
I think you're done. Thanks, Rex.
Thank you.
So, Bill, we're looking at options that, options that.
You can come up.
Bill, we're.
While he addresses him, you can just come. Yeah, you can come up while he addresses him.
Bill, we're looking at options that involve the city to be a repair person, at least in one instance. Does that mean that there might be staff time that needs to be accounted for? I mean, are there additional expenses that would not be covered in this $2.10 per 7,000 cubic feet of water? If the city is now fixing 14 sewer lines a year, or would we be fixing roads anyway because that's just how it goes when you have a sewer line problem?
First of all, in my experience, any program that any council in the United States that adopts, that's new, it's hard to know all the impacts to staff and costs, especially at this juncture right now. Obviously, if we're given direction to pursue three or two or whatever it is, we'll give it certainly more thought along with preparing the respective ordinance. But to answer your question, absolutely, there would be impacts to staff that would be inspecting, managing another contract than what they don't currently do. Does that mean more staff would be hired? No, probably not at all. Okay, would be absorbed, if you will. But, other costs and what the true costs will be, it's hard to say. But no, we're not, in this recommendation, we're kind of looking big picture, and Brad outlined each step very well tonight as to what your consideration should be. So, there's nothing that is going to be a half an FTE in either of these two scenarios. There'll be, there'll be probably a contract similar to what we call our miscellaneous repairs. Basically, our sewer crews do not repair anything certainly more than a few feet deep storm or sanitary service. It's all contracted out. That's a business decision we made a long time ago. So, this would be included with miscellaneous repairs. We would need to have that contractor as part of the contract be available on a moment's notice to respond. They would have to be written in, that you have to respond within so many, 24 hours or whatever, we'd have to work out those details.
Right.
Because typically, it's an emergency, we need to deal with it. But yeah, our staff would definitely have to coordinate, but right now, they do. I mean, we want homeowners to call us first. So, Brad and his staff do come out and do that thing. It's just that, yeah, there'd be a little more extra time, if you will, for a right-of-way inspector or whomever, civil engineer, to spend. But no, we're not adding staff.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. Thank you.
And just to clarify, it would be a trade-off too. I mean, if you, if we chose option three and you created this new program to simply do the repair, then we would eliminate the reimbursement and the 75%.
Right.
And you wouldn't have to spend time explaining that and cutting checks and.
Correct.
Verifying that work was done right and all of that.
Yeah.
Okay.
But until we actually do it, then we'll really know the nuances.
Go ahead.
Now, where am I? Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood, 1309 West Tremont Street in Urbana. To Ms. Heather Stevenson and the council. I'm going to have to do some comparative analyses. And in looking at number four, I guess I should call it intestinal fortitude or something, I can't say guts, can I, Bishop? My gut feeling is, it just can't cost as much for number four. So, Brother Robert, I'm going to have to talk to you and Bishop like I usually do.
Okay.
Okay. So, that's all I got to say. Because number four, I just can't.
Thank you. All right, well, what I read in the memo is that you're looking for direction, so is there someone who has a motion that they'd like to?
Yeah, I'll go with that. I think we should explore two, two and three option, number two and three, and I'm thinking probably number three sounds like the most positive, but we can probably eliminate the others. And, you know, maybe we can come up with a refined version.
Charlie?
Well, actually, I'm not sure how you can remove the others. I mean, the, I like the option, I like keeping the $4,500 option or the $6,000 option out there for those people who need to work, you know, to remove the pavement or something. If, you know, the city goes in to do a repair of a specific blockage of number three, that, what about those people who do decide that they need to do pipe bursting or sewer lining or something like that and do an actual repair, full-blown, or replacement type thing? So, I think the, you know, leaving the $4,500 option there for those people who need to do one kind of construction or using option two and having a $6,000 cap provides relief for one way of going about a repair. The option three is an emergent, I look at it as more of an emergency situation for, for a situation that it has a specific, one of these specific issues involved. That doesn't preclude the homeowner going back at some other time and, and doing pipe bursting or, or sewer lining or something like that. So, so I'm, I'm looking at a combination of option one, as we currently have, plus three, or option two, plus three.
Eric?
So, my, if I had to make a specific motion, I would ask for an ordinance to be drafted along the lines of option three. I think the problem with, the problem with doing nothing or option one is that we still, for some folks, will have the same problem that we started out with, which is that some people are going to get hit with big bills. The thing that I most like about option three is that it gives the city the most control over the work that's done and how it's done, and the most, and, and makes the city the prime evaluator of what needs to be done. And I think that, that in the long run, this is going to result in things being done in the most cost-effective way. So, so that, that would be my inclination.
Diane?
I guess I had a question. Is, would you have a situation where you would need a combination of two and three? I, I sort of thought three covered all the bases. So, why would we need to maintain both the programs?
I think, as we said this evening, three takes care of the initial problem. If a homeowner wants to do some repair, replacement, lining beyond the problem area, then our program excludes that.
Right.
Situation. So, if it's, and again, if we dig up 10 feet of pavements and replace 10 feet of pipe, 100% city cost in option three. If the homeowner says, you know what, we're ending at that 10-foot mark, I want to go the next 50 feet and replace it also, you know, that's, that's their expense, that's what they're choosing to do. If council says, well, some of that is still in the right-of-way, still includes some pavement, we want to include coverage of that such as the current program, we did not consider that this evening, that would be an extra expense, correct? So, we didn't consider that this evening, but that's a, that's a hybrid, if you will, of one and three or two and three. But otherwise, number three is really take care of the problem. It may be 10-foot long, it might be 50-foot long, we don't know, but anything within the right-of-way, 100% city cost by city contractor.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Diane?
I think I prefer if we're, option three, but I would like to keep it at option three and just keep it simple. And if the lateral's in the private property, then it's the private property owner's responsibility, rather than trying to create a hybrid and maintain two programs, and that actually is going to cost more, as I understand it. So, I would, I would go with option three out of, out of all of these. It's already a very generous program compared to all the communities in the area.
Bill?
Just to clarify, option three, I mean, we're going to use our best judgment as if that line is our own line. I mean, you know, I mean, if we dig up and we find the repair, but the rest of the pipe has crumbled and cracked or what have you, we're not going to leave that because in a year or two or three, the rest of it's going to collapse too. So, we have to, we will use our best judgment as to making that repair within the right-of-way. Now, if it goes beyond the property line, then we knock on the door and say, okay, from here on, on private property, if you want to take care of this while we're here, you pay 100% of that cost. So, so we don't, if we're going to make the expense of excavation and repairing it, we're going to make sure, within reason, by televising what have you, that the balance of the pipes is in good shape. Yeah.
Charlie?
Okay, so, if we go with option three, does that mean we get rid of option one?
Sure.
Yeah, and I see, I see, I think that's, and I think that's, that's a mistake. I think you want to have one or the other. You need to give the homeowner the option that, that in the event that they want to replace the entire, their entire system and they have to make a cut in the pavement to get in there to do the pipe bursting, or sewer lining, or if there's, if that's not an option, they have to cut the pavement to do the repair, then they, then, then we should give them some reimbursement for replacing the dry, the, the street and the sidewalk in the right-of-way. So, you know, I would prefer to keep option one plus offer option three in, for those special cases that are listed in option three.
Robert?
As a point of clarification, I think that the right-of-way, is my understanding, is one foot inside the property line of the owner on both sides of the street. So, theoretically, that would never occur. The city's right-of-way, is my understanding, based on, was when they did Goodwin Avenue, is one foot inside on the sidewalk, on my.
Most places, yeah. Some places, it is the sidewalk.
Well, maybe they need to do a new survey or whatever, but the bottom line is, is one foot on either side, and you would never get into the sidewalk. The necessity to get into it. That would, if they made a repair from wherever the T was to wherever they're responsible for, it would be one foot on either side of the sidewalk to the property line. That's what the surveys indicated in there.
Well, maybe he can clarify. Tell me, tell me where the property lines are.
The original idea was that, that we have a $4,500 program now. That wouldn't go away. We could, we could add option three for those special cases where a repair is needed. Is that the way I understood this, or option one would go away?
The $4,500 reimbursement program would go away, we'd only have option three.
Well, and that was one of the points we made between option two and three. Option two has more flexibility for the property owner because they can decide, do they want to dig it up and just repair it where it's broken, or as Charlie mentioned, do they want to take a more proactive approach and line the entire thing from their house out to the, to the city main, and they can use, you know, that reimbursement amount to pay for any pavement that they have to remove within the public right-of-way. It gives the most flexibility. Option three is essentially, we're going to dig up where the problem is and fix it. I mean, if there's roots coming through the other joints, you know, we're not necessarily going to address that because that's a maintenance issue. And Bill's right, if we can't find a good piece of pipe to tie back into with our repair, we'll chase it out till we get to a decent enough piece, but we're not going to fix the entire lateral within the property, or within the right-of-way under option three. We're just fixing it where it's broken to get it up and functioning again. We're, since we don't own the lateral under either options two or three, we're just fixing the problem so the lateral works again under option three.
Brandon?
But I mean, as Bill said, we're, we're the long-term stewards of it. We'll use our best judgment. If the line is broken the next five feet down, we should do those other five feet while we're down there. And ultimately, I guess I think option three is enough on its own. I don't think we also need this other incentive. We're the ones as the city, because we're the ones who, if it breaks five years from now, will have to go down there and pay again. We're the ones who have the incentive to be proactive if it makes financial sense to be proactive, and to use our best judgment to manage the long-term total cost of ownership over this, over this network of pipes. So, I don't feel like we need to give an extra incentive to residents to be even more proactive than we would otherwise be as the best stewards of spending these funds. I feel like option three is sufficient on its own.
Diane?
Plus, we have to remember, these decisions are typically going to made, be made under duress, and if you've got a backed-up pipe or a collapsed pipe, we've got to keep this simple enough so that people understand who they call and what will happen after they make a phone call. And, and having a hybrid program and choices, it's just too much. It's too many, too many choices at a time. It's too many, too many choices at a time when people aren't really prepared to make those choices.
Dennis?
The whole discussion about how to fix the sewer laterals really initiated when people had trouble because there was a street involved. And people didn't come to us when there was a problem in their backyards or in their front yards. It's where the problem enters the street that people's expenses became so much higher that they needed help. So if the people are, were willing originally to deal with their problem in their own yard, you know, you know, they can get their brother-in-law to help, you know, dig the land out if they want to, you know, and, and get the plumber over there to fix that part in their yard, they can do their own manual labor if they wish. But we're, so as long as we're addressing the issue that came to us originally, which is how to fix something under the street cement, I think we're doing pretty well.
Eric?
You know, about 50 years ago, I went to a dentist who told me that I had to have all of my wisdom teeth removed immediately, otherwise I was going to have terrible problems. That didn't sound like a lot of fun, so I procrastinated. And I'm still procrastinating. And the moral of that story is that a homeowner under duress, you know, sewage is backing up in their basement, might be susceptible to believing that they might have to do a whole lot of things that they might not really have to do. And I think we'd be doing a, a good favor by stepping in and saying, we are going to do what we have to do to make this thing work, to the extent that it's under our right-of-way.
I guess Bill and Brad are probably still waiting on what, what we're going to do. So, I would like to, I guess the best thing we can do is take a straw pull and, and see, you know, go, is that fair, is this, okay, so option one?
Motion there, what have you, but, yeah.
Okay. Option two. Charlie? Option three? And option four? Option five? Okay. It looks like option three is going to be the one that is going to be the one that Brad and Bill, we're going to have you look at and, and do maybe a little more explaining to homeowners and, and we'll leave it at that. All right. Charlie?
I would just point out that when we first took this policy up, it was to reimburse people for the cost of repairing pavement and sidewalk for what was essentially a voluntary replacement of their sewer lateral. Okay? We've now replaced, you know, with option three, we replace that program, that flexibility, with something that is very specific and targeted to certain kinds of events. And I think that's a mistake. Option two provides a lot more flexibility to the homeowner. Option one provides that same level of flexibility, but with $1,500 less for the repair. So I think, I think it's a mistake to think that option three here will replay, will fix the problem. And I see a couple of people who understand what I'm saying, and, and, but I'm not, I'm not sure quite how to, to express this, you know. If, in fact, you just want to deal with those specific cases listed in option three and go back to having no program for helping with sidewalk and street repair, then fine, choose option three. What I'm saying is, is that, you know, we, we can have our cake and eat it too by looking at either option two or some blend of option two plus three.
Diane?
I would be fine with option two, but I keep hearing that people can't afford the upfront costs.
That's why you do both.
Well, if three can do it, then why would you do two? I don't understand.
Because three doesn't cover all the cases that two covers.
But it covers up to the right-of-way.
No, it doesn't. It only covers the three specific things that are detailed in option three. A sewer collapse, an unreparable blockage, what was the third one?
Sinkhole.
What else can you have? If you have any more than that, you're in trouble.
I'm going to dress myself and just ask a question, and that is, as a homeowner yourself, I mean, what, what would be, it's just kind of a common sense question, what, in your opinion, as a homeowner, not as the, you know, public works manager, but as a homeowner, what, what would you see as being the best option?
Well, I hate to give a political answer, but two and three are both very good and I think are outstanding, but if three, where the city would come in and do the repair in the right-of-way, that would be great. If a homeowner, I think what I'm hearing, so three, to answer your question.
Okay.
But I, I understand where Councilman Smith is coming, because let's just say, you know, in my scenario, I really want to replace the entire line. You know, it's a 100-year-old home, the pipe's falling apart, et cetera. So, there will be expenses beyond maybe just the point repair in the right-of-way, but it may, may include leaving some good pipe, but it'd be nice to maybe take care of all the pipe and put PVC in from the sewer main all the way up to the house. So I can see that scenario maybe coming about, or possibly aligning to, but I, I think we get back to what, what, why were we contacted in 2007, in 2008? And the ordinance that we originally had was working very well. The one that was just appealed and replaced is even a, a greater response to help defray the cost. And our brainstorming in the last few weeks, okay, and we came up with these various options, you know, three just kind of fell out as, well, maybe this would be the ultimate to really address, and the homeowner then is out of the equation totally, so to speak, for work in the right-of-way. And we thought this was an attractive option, and it wasn't a huge cost impact to all the citizens of Urbana. So it's, it's, that seemed attractive to us.
Sure.
Okay, but I, I think there may be some scenarios out there, and I, I think it goes down to whether it's lining or whatever, I think it boils down to the pipe itself is really the homeowner's responsibility. And in a certain degree, option three, the city is taking care of some length of pipe, whereas the other options, you know, were, or at least one or two, were not taking care of the pipe. That's a homeowner's responsibility.
Sure.
So I think if we do a repair and it's 10 feet of pipe replaced, but the homeowner says, oh, boy, I want to replace the rest of it, it's probably their responsibility.
Sure. I just want to, I just want to add that my thinking is, okay, three, and then encourage homeowners to look into what American Illinois Water has when it comes to insurance for their own homes, and see if that's something that they want to do on their own, at least they have the information out there. That would be, what I would think would be, you know, almost an educational addition to number three, so.
One more.
Robert?
One thing that, if we go back to the original proposal, that the people from the community came to us, and they said they want the city to be responsible for the right-of-way. That was true. And they had no problem in dealing with their own sewer line. And if that means attaching to the lateral at the sidewalk, that's cool. They, they would foot that responsibility. And I think option three does that for them.
All right. Okay, well, do you have the answer you need?
Yes.
Looks like three is probably the best one to, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I think we have some more staff report. Tom Carino?
Yes, good evening. I just wanted to highlight a few marketing material pieces that you have in front of you. This is primarily the work of Natalie Kenny Marquez, but you should have a Ebert Fest item in front of you. If you look on page 39, there is an ad that is a partnership between the City of Urbana and the Urbana Business Association, and it highlights the new phone app that we've done in partnership with the UBA. One thing I wanted to point out is that, at the time of printing, the QR code for the Android app was not available, but we do now have that. And so this other marketing piece that you have in front of you actually has the QR code for both the iPhone and the Android device. I'd also like to point out that something like this will actually be available at all of the hotels in Urbana, and then businesses are also going to be offered this, which will kind of sit at the front desk. And then also, there is a decal that will also have the QR codes, and that decal is going to be offered to businesses to put on their front door or their front window. So we're really trying to get the word out about the, the new phone app. And then also, another item you have in front of you, this is related to the Illinois Marathon. Again, a partnership with the Urbana Business Association. We will have a presence at the Runners Expo where all the runners check in, and we'll be staffing that table, again, in partnership with UBA. And anyone who wants one of these, the little line is a place where you can write the name of your favorite runner to cheer that runner on. So, all of you should have a copy of this in front of you. Again, most of these items are the hard work of Natalie Kenny Marquez and a partnership with the UBA. So, that's all I have.
All right. Libby and Robert? One of them?
Hi, my name is Robert Myers. Planning manager with the city. Quickly, the Preservation and Conservation Association of Champaign County last weekend held their annual awards, and I'm pleased to say, pleased to say that the City of Urbana was included in several of those awards. First, the Advocacy Heritage Award went for the Modern Urbana Homes Tour 2012, and the recipients were the City of Urbana, along with the University of Illinois professor and students in the graduate seminar class that undertook that project. It was really successful. I don't remember the attendance, but it was, apologize, either 300 to 400 people attended the Modern Homes Tour. Also, PACA awarded a Commercial Heritage Award for the Urbana Landmark Hotel for assistance with revitalization of the Urbana Landmark Hotel, and that award was made jointly to Xiao Jian Yuan, the City of Urbana, and architect Guy Himpel.
Well, we've got another award, and that was from healthcare consumers for the City of Urbana contributing to social service agencies. And they also hope that other governments would join us in this. I'm not naming any names, but that was, that was very nice. And then on Saturday, we had the art reception for the artist from China, Liu Junzhang, and we had a very nice dinner at Silver Creek, and everybody was having a lot of fun, so that worked out very nicely. And we are planning to have a trip to our sister city in China this second half of July, and anybody who's interested should let me know so we can figure out what cities we want to go to after Haizhou.
Great. Are there any other staff reports? Okay, we will move along. Approval of minutes of the previous meeting, April 8th, 2013. I'd entertain them. It's been moved by Brandon and seconded by Robert. Are there any additions, corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Next, I have public input, and I have Greg Chu, but you want to speak at the time of the, okay. And then Carol McCusick. And if you'd state your name, your address, and limit your comments to five minutes.
Can I borrow your book?
Oh, my God. Sure.
Carol McCusick, 1907 North Cunningham. So, this binder is one complaint because it's, one of the rings doesn't close all the way. But anyway, I was wondering whether a style that was just circular instead of this sort of D-shaped ring would be better for leafing through things. It's really hard to check anything out. And also, I think it would be good to have, okay, some clarification that there's an, if there's an exact parallel between the items that are listed on the meeting page, the city council meeting page for, like, the, the date, April 22nd, would be the agenda, and then there, there are other links for other agenda items, and it would be good if there was an, if you could know that there would be, I mean, I, I shouldn't say what would be good, but just asking, actually, you should ask the question of, is there exact correspondence to, like, sections of this binder in the back with the links and in the order that they are on the meeting page? If, if those, those, those items, it seems like they become pretty important because, okay, I had an example, at a, two weeks ago, I guess, of the April 8th, there was a, it began, I guess, this consideration of a legacy tree program, and so it says here in the minutes that were just approved, that some, a paragraph of language that was originated at the meeting by Oliverson Roberts. And so, I'm feeling that another item about the binder is that you would want to have the committee and the council, not just, right now, I think it's a commit, the last committee meeting and this committee meeting, but I think you want the committee meeting and the council that follows it so you can see how the, the language got assimilated into the, into the ordinance. And I was also thinking, like, you have really teeny little tabs all around, way along the edge of the pages, and you'd know that when you went to the tab, the thing that was right at the tab, like, the last part of the, of that section would be the actual legislation. And, because, like, in, in minutes, you're just, you're calling the legacy tree program by the same name, even though it's going to get this extra paragraph that, that, for example, like Dennis was suggesting be built in, I guess, and it was approved to be built in by the committee. So if, if the council approved the recommendations of the committee the following week. So, like, if you put all those little things on the edge and then you were going to have put, and, and circular rings, I was wondering, and that really closed, that would be a lot easier for the people who are counting on paper to follow the meeting.
You have one minute, Ms. McCusick.
I was looking at the item on the agenda that has to do with a, a solid waste thing, agreement between Champaign and Urbana that, and it, there's a paragraph in the staff memo that didn't make, I couldn't follow, and it starts out because of less, and goes on from there. It has the words fiscal year 1415 in it, but I guess, I also wonder, it's like, where is the Urbana landfill complex? One thing I did hear was, I was, thank you.
Next, we have ordinance number 2013-04-037, ordinance pending Urbana City Code, Chapter 26, Article 2, Vehicle Fire. Chapter 26, Article 2, Vehicle For Hire. Beth?
Hi, I'm Beth Beatty, and I'm the Finance Office Manager. I won't read all three pages of this, will you? But basically, we've been working on the revisions for this ordinance for almost two years now. And a lot of it's come from just comments from vehicle-for-hire owners, drivers, staff, just complaints that we've had. And really, we really try to address all the issues that were brought to us. And a lot of it just deals with updating our application process and compliance, adding things, and just really cleaning up the current ordinance. So, Kurt Borman and myself have met with the City of Champaign a number of times because we do have that reciprocal licensing process. And, you know, the other thing why it's necessary is vehicle-for-hire companies have just really taken off in the last five years. So, I think maybe five years ago, we might have licensed 20 companies. And this fiscal year, we've licensed 44. And I, you know, the last count-
And they were all at the airport last night.
Right. But, you know, we have 96 vehicles on the road, and it's just a lot, the City of Urbana handles all of the licensing for, on behalf of both cities. And really, it's just to cut down on the amount of time that my staff, you know, has to deal with and just make the licensing process and the ordinance just clear, not only for the companies and the drivers, but the staff who are trying to communicate with them. So, they can, it's just better to understand. So, does anybody have any questions?
Charlie Smythe?
First, I wanted to compliment you. The memo was very clear, good summaries of the different points. And I like, you know, the style now of using the strikeout and new material on these things is really, makes it much easier to understand where things are going and where they're coming from. My only question on the whole thing is the reciprocal issuance thing. We have this program with the City of Champaign. So, do they have the same language, or we just do everything under this ordinance?
The ordinance, both ordinances are basically identical. Theirs is Chapter 36.
Okay.
Ours is Chapter 26.
And then how does the county fit in, then?
It doesn't.
Doesn't?
Uh-uh.
So, if somebody has a company in the county, what do they do?
If somebody has, like, a company, is Rantool in Champaign County? Yes, okay. If somebody has a company in Rantool, we're basically, you know, telling them that, you know, if they want to come in and drop somebody off and then, you know, go back to Rantool, that's fine, we don't have a problem with it, if you're licensed in another city in the county. However, if you want to operate in Champaign-Urbana, pick up somebody, take them somewhere else, drop them off, you need to license with us as well as your drivers.
Go ahead, Dennis, and then Robert.
This may or may not affect the licensed delivery systems that we have here in our city. And it may be a situation that goes beyond the parameters of our needs for control. But there was a really interesting, timely article in today's Daily Line Eye concerning problems that students experienced using Suburban Express as a delivery system from the airports. And they, and what the problem was, was the clarity about what the contracted ticket parameters are. And there were people who were getting incredible fines attached to their, you know, through court adjustment, education, what do they call it, the judgments of the court filed by the transport company, because especially this has to do with foreign exchange students or foreign students coming to the university who don't understand the English as a first language in particular. Where they would might board the wrong bus, a bus maybe that was, arrived, you know, 20 minutes before the one that they bought their ticket for. Or if there was a problem that delayed the bus, there are all kinds of conditions which, for which the bus company was taking people to court. And a $25 transport ticket to Champaign suddenly became $325, because maybe the student didn't appear in court up in Ford County or whatever county is just out where O'Hare is. And so, this is, so the operational standards of this particular bus company made front page the Daily Line Eye today. And I'm wondering if there is something about our service-for-hire contract that should be aware of this situation as it might affect riders coming in and out of Urbana and Champaign?
While we don't currently license companies like Suburban Express, and we surveyed, you know, other surrounding communities, as well as other college campuses like ourself, and only one other community and college campus licensed chartered buses. So, you know, and it does-
And we don't regulate them in any way, even though they deliver here?
We do not regulate them. And that's one of the things we put in the proposed, is the definition of a charter service and allowing the exemption as long as they're operating in that manner.
Well, this company seems to be operating in a manner which is very controversial and perhaps not even ethical.
Right.
And people are being penalized for being, not being able to speak English to the satisfaction of the driver. And they're even being penalized for bringing, the gentleman who, about who this article initiated, went to the defense of a foreign-speaking student. And as a result, he's been banned from riding on this bus service from, you know, for now until whenever. And, you know, if there's a bus company or any level of regulation that we can have to make sure that when they arrive in Urbana, the students are offered, afforded the respect and dignity that they reserve, that they're, they should expect in, you know, under the province of our community, I think there should be some kind of address to that.
Robert?
The question I had was, you mentioned earlier that you were kind of bogged down in terms of your department. How did you manage to get the lead for all of this, anyway?
It was, well, for nine years, I used to do the work. And then, you know, three, almost three years ago, I just accepted it when I accepted the position. So, it's always been in this office. I've been here almost 12 years. The City of Urbana's always handled the licensing process. It's not something that we mind handling, but the work has doubled. So, what we've done is, I've worked with Information Services and asked them to write a program for us to make the compliance letters more seamless, so it doesn't take up as much staff time.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Mayor Pressing?
Does Champaign contribute to the sharing of the administrative costs?
Um, no. I mean, they, our licensing fee, we get the majority of the fee. So, this currently, it's $130 for Urbana, and Champaign gets $30, so 160 total for a company to license. With a driver, it's a $20 fee for Urbana, it's a $5 licensing fee for Champaign.
Okay. Thank you.
Diane?
I'd move that we send ordinance number 2013-04-037 to council with a recommendation for approval.
I second.
It's been moved by Diane, seconded by Dennis. Eric?
Yeah, I do have one question. So, one of the things that I noticed was the particular timeframe with respect to an individual who had gotten out of prison for a felony conviction. And I'm looking at that and having two conflicting emotions. And one is, yeah, I mean, I'd rather not, you know, put myself in a car with a dangerous person. On the other hand, I'm very mindful of the fact that part of somebody coming successfully back into society is being able to be employed. So, I'm wondering how those concerns were balanced in this case? Or is there some basis of evidence as to what hazard to the public a person in that situation is?
Well, I'm not sure, and this might be a better question for the police department to answer. I'm not sure what level of felony, I mean, if a felony is a felony, no matter what occurred. But I know that when I drop off my daughter at her school, there's vehicles for hire drivers dropping off children in the morning.
Right.
And it's, you know, they're, it's a service to the public. And I think, as the city, if we're handling the license, I think we have an obligation for everybody's public safety. It's something that I could check with the police department. I haven't had anyone complain to me personally about, hey, I, you know, I just, why can't I, you know, I just got this felony, why can't, I just haven't had any of those complaints to look into it. No one has said that they're not happy with the four-year restriction.
So, I guess I'd just like to know if that's possible, Chief, if you can give some advice on, you know, whether that provision is reasonable, whether we're doing the right kind of balance? I mean, because it's also, I mean, unemployed ex-convicts, unemployed people who are returning to society also pose a big hazard. So, are we striking the right balance in the ordinance as we're writing it now?
Do you want me to look into it?
Well, I guess I'd prefer you look into it, yeah, because it's probably not fair to ask you to answer it off the top of your head. Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
I think also, if, Eric, you might want to address Todd Rent when it comes to, like, a human rights thing there. So, Charlie?
Yeah, I've seen a lot of these sorts of things with a five-year provision, so four years is in the same ballpark. Question for Jim. You know, going back to the issue with Suburban Express, do we have some ability to address the issue that's been raised in this article?
I suspect our ability would be very limited because it would be, given the fact that it is, they travel from, I think you said, O'Hare Airport, which is Cook County, down to Champaign County, it would probably be governed more likely under the Illinois Commerce Commission. And it even could be covered under Interstate Commerce Commission because they're picking up passengers at O'Hare. Interstate Commerce would be a federal regulatory scheme, which would trump anything we do. And Illinois Commerce Commission likewise would be a regulatory scheme. That's not to say that we couldn't initiate some concern, expression of concern to the Illinois Commerce Commission.
Okay, yeah, because they, I mean, they originate, they pick up people in my neighborhood, actually, so, I mean-
But they travel, I mean, most of the, you know, hired vehicles that I believe this ordinance seeks to address are pretty much within Champaign County.
Right.
When we cross over county lines and, you know, a number of counties, Ford, Iroquois, Will, Cankey, Kia, to Cook County, you will have much more interaction with the Illinois, at least the Illinois Commerce Commission. And you throw O'Hare Airport in there, you're dealing with the Interstate Commerce Commission.
Yeah, well, you know, it just, you know, given that Champaign-Urbana has a huge student population, increasing foreign population, it only serves our best interest to pursue this in some, whatever fashion we can.
Well, it's worth looking into, but I suspect our ability to regulate this particular-
Whatever you can do to push it up the line and make sure it gets the attention of the right people would be great.
If Dennis would pass along the article to me, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I will.
All right, well, Beth, I just appreciate the work that you've done. Beth and I have been in contact. I had someone from Star Limousine contact me and then shared concerns, contacted Beth, kind of got the ball rolling. And basically, the idea behind this ordinance was to clean up and just make it real clear for Star Limousine or whatever other, you know, cab services might be in Champaign-Urbana to just make it real clear what expectations are, what laws are. And so, it's, everyone's on the same level playing field. So, Beth, you did a great job, and I appreciate that. Thank you. Dennis?
Yeah, we're, I got carried away with one topic and I forgot two little questions, which maybe are for Jim. Really, maybe just wording, well, one thing's wording and one thing, maybe Beth, for you. And I'll go, Beth, I'll do yours first. You've got a rate, you've talked about in Section 2660 on page 10, top, about a method of rate calculation, and it talks about all the zones that, in the locality, people go through and how the different rates are. It would be great to have a zone map printed so that people could see visually what zone they're talking with and how many zones they're passing through on their trip.
We do have a zone map.
Oh, great.
Um, I, as an afterthought, I guess maybe I should have gave it to you. I didn't think about that. But it is, if they do use a zone rate, they are expected to post that. So, the, you know, the passengers can see that.
Yeah, because it's hard to figure out if I'm, you know, what zone I'm going through if I read the description that's written.
It's much easier with a map.
Right. So, you didn't have an addented map, so I just asked about it. And then there's, there was just one other thing, and maybe, Jim, this is kind of legal, perhaps. On the very first page, page one, we start right away, we're defining charter service. And I just, I'm just wondering if it's exactly worded correctly. It sounds like the definition is for a customer rather than a provider. It says charter service, charter service shall mean transportation using a bus of a group of persons who pursuant of a common purpose under a single contract at a fixed charge paid for the whole or part of the trip by a third person. Would it be better, or is it, should it be saying that a charter service shall mean transportation using a bus, well, for a group of persons rather than of a group of persons?
I think the better approach would be defining the use of a common vehicle by two or more people for a common single purpose.
Okay.
And if Beth wants us to work with that, help her work with that, we certainly would do that.
And what about adding a bit of a clause here right in the very first part? Right now, it says charter service shall mean transportation using a bus. What about if it said charter service shall mean the act of providing transportation? What transportation, I mean, does it clear that we're, that the provider is actually providing the ride in this language?
Well, the, there's even more concern beyond that because, does it have to be a bus? What's a bus? Is it a van?
Okay.
Is it one of those large coach vans? But we can, we'll get together tomorrow, the next day, and really figure out exactly what it is you're trying to define. But I think, I think the elements that are in here are well put.
Okay.
We just have to, maybe a comment or two of that ought to do it.
We'll tweak it tomorrow.
That's, I think, okay, thanks, you know.
Because Champaign has to work on this, too. They're still in the process of doing that. So, I would move not to send this to council for approval until, I believe it's May 20th?
May 20th?
The 3rd. Is that right? I could be wrong.
Later in May.
Later in May. Late May.
Okay, so, this is the-
Is it 19?
Oh, you want to bring it back to the-
Do I say that? I just don't want to go into it.
Committee of the whole? Because if you just make that one change, you could do it in the first meeting in May.
Right, but I want to delay.
You need a delay?
Champagne needs more time.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Just in case they don't get everything done that they need to, I don't want to have a past ordinance and then they don't. Because it needs to be-
So, we should have a motion that we just keep this in council, in committee?
Keep it in committee. Okay.
So, I'll make that motion, because-
We have a motion on the table to send this to council with the recommendation for approval, so-
Should I withdraw that motion? I'll withdraw that motion.
And I second my withdrawal.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Beth. Next, we have the Public Arts Program update, and Greg Chu wanted to address.
Do you want to do the update, Prester?
I think he just, he's been sitting here a long time. If you just state your name, your address, and limit your comments to five minutes.
Okay, yeah, I know you guys had a lot in the pipeline tonight, so I want to keep things quick. I'm Gregory Chu, 2803 Prairie Meadow Drive. Now, that's in Champaign, but I still own property in Urbana, and probably more importantly, I taught English and drama at Urbana High School for 36 years. So if you cut me, I bleed black and orange. Moreover, and most importantly, I'm on the Urbana Public Arts Commission, and part of my involvement is on the Royer Subcommittee for the Arts Commission, working with Alona and Dennis, and I've been asked to inform you about something we piloted last year as you consider budget issues for next year's public arts programs. Now, the current proposal will not fund this pilot program we did, but I understand this is based on some rather draconian projections for budget, and so I'm here to make a pitch. Well, I asked to be on the Royer Subcommittee because I spent a lot of time in Joseph Royer's high school. I have a real appreciation for it. It's 100 years old practically this month, and it's an impressive building that served the youth of our community. And that space, I've walked through with a lot of reunions, and that space is very particular to people and very specific to their memories of every generation that passed through UHS. And that's what I'd like to bring with the plaque presentations that we've been doing with the Royer Subcommittee this year. I'd like to have them tied to events that celebrate notable anniversaries at other Royer buildings. For example, last summer, we combined a plaque ceremony with the perfect storm of three class reunions the same weekend. It was a partnership with the city, Urbana School District, the Alumni Association. We had a number of events included with the return of notable Urbana alumnus Mark Roberts, who was pretty much on his best behavior. It was quite a weekend. Mark hosted an evening of songs performed by the leads from 40 years of UHS musicals, and it was all part of a benefit for the restoration of Royer's auditorium. Our final event, though, was the plaque presentation for UHS entering its 100th year, along with a barbershop quartet singing songs from 1913 and an ice cream social. We had between 150 and 200 people turn out, I'm basing that on scoop counts for ice cream, that's how I could guesstimate it. But the city was very supportive. Mayor Pressing came out and presented, proclaimed Mark Roberts' Day on that day. Mark was very thrilled by that, and you can see the plaque now close to Race Street, near the track on the west side of Urbana High School. Well, we've discussed ways on the Subcommittee to collaborate with local artists, businesses, the schools, the library, and the parks to celebrate other Royer buildings on significant anniversaries. And when we plant a plaque, that plaque will be linked to an event that creates new memories around the site of the event, through period music, through speakers, readings, and performances. Well, as a longtime Urbana teacher, I really look to involve our young people in these kinds of events. I would like to see neighbors and families joining them to make our past their present. And our goal is to see three such events each year, keeping the Royer heritage in the public eye and in our public life. This way, the art of architecture will be linked to public arts of all kinds. And when a play or a concert is over, all that's left usually is memories. Every time participants, however, walk past one of these Royer plaques, we hope they'll have those new memories to call on of a unique place in Urbana. We've used a creative combination of funding for these events, and we can look to partnerships for future events. I hope you'll look for ways to support this so that we can continue this pilot that we started this year. And certainly Christina has been very supportive of this, but the plan that you'll see today, I think, is predicated on a major budget cut proposal, so I'm here to make my pitch.
Are you pressing?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I talked to Dennis about this earlier today, and just because it's not in the public arts budget, we have funded these things from other parts of the budget, so it'd be nice to have specifics on what you would like to do during the year, if you have specific buildings that you need to have honored, and what kind of an event, but I agree that it's an important thing, but just because it's not in this particular budget does not mean that we cannot do it.
Okay, yeah, that's good. I know there were a lot of creative ways that we got through this year with it as well, and, yeah, I know the hotel is, we already have a plaque ready for the hotel, and I've got a few ideas involved with that. Usually my ideas involve things like involving the high school track team and things like that. We're going to try to stage the Lincoln race with somebody from the track team.
Charlie, it's my thing, Eric.
Yeah, well, since we're on the subject of the Royer district, and I showed Dennis my idea today, I really like the Lincoln sign board right by Bucy Bank, and I really think we need something like that for the Royer district in that same general vicinity, one that maybe, you know, gives a story of who is Joseph Royer, and then maybe a map below it of where the buildings are, sort of a, you know, at least an introduction to it. We have the walking tour, you know, probably need a podcast that people can download to go with that sign, that sort of thing. That, to me, probably belongs somewhere in the public arts program budget, somewhere, sometime. I'd like to get your take on that.
Yeah, I just think the Royer connection is such an exciting aspect. I mean, Royer basically created the skyline of Urbana, and anything we can do to make people aware of the surprises that meet them practically every other block in the city.
The sign I have in mind would probably be a piece of art, in a sense, that somebody has to design, you know, a monument, sign of some kind for the downtown, and so I think it, you know, it's a request I would have of the Arts Commission to get that in, you know, somewhere, sometime in the very near future.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate it, I'll bring it along on my, for my part, to the Arts Commission at our next meeting. Thank you.
Eric?
I'm going to take prerogative of old geezer-hood and reflect on a couple of things that come to my mind when I'm seeing you here. One is, I can't believe that I actually directed you in an Armory Theater show when you were an undergraduate. Boy, does that make me feel old, but also-
Hopefully, no photos exist from that.
But also, also, I'm, just fast-forwarding a few years, I just remember so well the battle we had in 1984 to save the high school. There was a big, big fight because there were people whom I respect, but who wanted to tear that thing down, and I'm so happy and proud to have been on the right side of that, you know, both the right side and the winning side, for a change, of that battle, so it's wonderful that you have, you know, carried the torch for all the wonderful stuff you've done in that building and the stuff you're doing now to commemorate it, together with the other Royer stuff.
Yeah, well, thanks, Eric. I have to tell you, every time I do a reunion tour of the building, I mean, they're fascinated by the changes in the building, as well as immediately, everybody's talking about what used to be there and things like that, so. Old teachers and old buildings, that's the two subjects I like to bring up.
Dennis?
Yes, oh, sorry.
Yeah, and I appreciate the fact that you actually, not only kind of give advice because you're on the commission, but you actually care to come and be more proactively, you know, an advocate for the, you know, your enthusiasms on the commission. I like to hear people from the different commissions come and give their two cents because that way we get more direct input, you know, and helps guide us, I think, and it's important to share enthusiasm for a topic because we may not underget it, you know, unless we hear it. So if you were to do, you know, a couple more buildings, I mean, I'd be curious to hear other thoughts you have about the district that you could see creatively come alive, you know, through placking or whatever.
Well, one I mentioned to you briefly was the building that housed the pharmacy on Main Street, the, with, and you informed me that they found, the current owner, found pharmaceutical instruments from the turn of the century in the back, you know, right out of Dr. Frankenstein's laboratory, perhaps, but the idea would be to see if we can partner, perhaps, with the local pharmacists to kind of celebrate. I did a little bit of a project last year that compared how pharmacy changed from 1850 to 1890. It went from naturalism to snake oil in 40 years, and that was a part of the history of Urbana, and that building saw all that. So I could see, you know, I come from a drama point of view, so I'm looking at things like, how could we stage something, how can we create some sort of scenes or group readings or, and music. And again, I can draw on so many talented people from high school present and past that I would hope we could, I could cajole into getting involved. I got a lot of them involved last summer, so I know that, you know, it's doable. But that's one, and certainly, there's certainly other buildings, you know, that we could talk about as well, including, I talked with somebody at the library about the mother-in-law's cottage and the fairy tales that were written by Joseph Royer's, I believe it's his sister-in-law, which, the whole book is in the archives, and the head of the archives gave me a copy of it, and I'm trying to turn it into sort of a short play that we could tie in with the library when they do their fairy tale prom.
Right, any other questions?
Well, I just love your creative thinking and the expanse, you know, and we're just talking about some plaques, but obviously, there's so much more potential that could be, that the district could bring to the community in performance art if the projects could be funded. So that's my point.
Thank you, yeah, I appreciate the support, and I'm excited by the possibilities, so, thank you.
I didn't appreciate or love the, his creative thinking in 1991, but I appreciate it now, because in 1991, that meant homework. So, thank you for all your years at the school in both English and in drama.
Oh, well, I hope you've caught up on your sleep since then. Thank you.
Thanks. Next, oh, I guess we're still on the Public Arts Program update.
I just want to say that Christina McClelland won an award. We had a lot of awards last week, and Christina got Woman of Distinction Award from the Girl Scouts for all her efforts on public art.
Nice, congratulations.
Thank you. Well, I'm Christina McClelland, Public Arts Coordinator for the City of Urbana, as the mayor said, and tonight I'm here to present an update on the Urbana Public Arts Program throughout this last fiscal year, as well as the program plan for fiscal year 1314, and I'm glad that I included some photos of the dedication for the Royer sign at UHS that Greg Chu alluded to, because there is a great shot of the barbershop quartet that I think you'll enjoy. Here's something you may recognize if you have walked downtown since August, and I'll go into that a little more later, but this was one of the new programs that the Public Arts Commission was able to launch through a lot of hard work. This, we're coming up on the five-year anniversary of the creation of the Public Arts Program. Actually, it was yesterday, April 21, 2008, so. In this fifth year of success, the Public Arts Commission awarded 23 Urbana Arts Grants. As I mentioned before, I launched the Murals on Glass Project, added performances to the monthly Art at the Market workshops at Urbana's Market at the Square, installed three new temporary public art pieces. I mentioned the dedication of the Royer plaque, presented four Artist of the Corridor exhibitions, produced episodes of Art Now, spotlighting the work of eight local artists, was a recipient of an Illinois Arts Council Program Grant for the third consecutive year. There was a dedication for the Art in the Park Project in October, and we are honored to present the only live, in-person workshop by the Illinois Arts Council for individual artist support grants. Of all the cities in Illinois, they chose to come here and present to artists here about their arts grants programs, so that was exciting. We've also launched a pretty successful public arts intern program that provides an educational opportunity for students at the University of Illinois, and has even led to one of our former interns from last summer now getting a job at the Urbana Business Association. So we're providing some arts administration skills for students who have that interest. And here are some photo highlights of what has been done this year. Of course, the Public Arts Program would not be able to function without the amazing volunteer efforts of the commissioners who have been involved this year, including Pat Salmon, the chair, Mary Ann Winkelmice, the vice chair, Gregory Chu, who spoke to you just a little bit ago, Barbara Hedlund, who I think is our longest-serving member and who was a member of the Public Arts Task Force before there was even a Public Arts Commission, John Morrison, Virginia Waller, and Robert Lewis is no longer serving, but he's also been assisting with the King Park Project since leaving the commission, which we appreciate. As I mentioned, this year, the program received a $3,250 program grant from the Illinois Arts Council, and this was the third year of support from the Illinois Arts Council. Also, when they presented the in-person workshop, I had the opportunity to take one of their staff members around to see what the Public Arts Program has accomplished, and they were very impressed. Also, the Urbana Business Association has continued to support the business backs the arts category of the Urbana Arts Grants Program through a $5,000 donation. In the past year, $1,000 in funding from T3 liquor licenses was received, and the Commission is working on a new fundraising program called Keep It or Change It that will allow citizens to donate money toward sculptures that we currently have on temporary lease to possibly make them permanent, or at least to renew their leases, or they can donate money toward bringing new sculpture to Urbana. So the Commission's been working very hard on this, and we hope to launch it in the next coming months. We continue to market the program through a variety of channels, including an email newsletter, Facebook page, and Twitter account, and all of these have shown quite a bit of increased engagement over the past year. We've been able to work with Natalie Kenny Marquez, our city marketing coordinator, as well as the Urbana Business Association, to increase our presence in print, radio, and online advertising, and we also distribute informational pieces, including a seasonal guide to area arts classes and other informational pieces. We also work with many partners, some of whom you'll see here, but we've been able to establish a lot of great relationships in the community that allow us to stretch our resources farther and also to increase engagement in our many programs. The Urbana Arts Grants Program has been a great success of this five years of the Urbana Public Arts Program. 108 projects have been supported in its past cycles, and this year, we were able to have an online application system for the first time, which resulted in us receiving 57 applications for funding, and of those, 23 projects were selected for funding in a variety of arts disciplines. And I'll just show you some pictures from some of those, but- And I'll just show you some pictures from some of those, but it really is a diverse array of projects that engage, a diverse array of the community in a diverse array of arts areas. So, it's a way that the Public Arts Commission is able to really, you know, have a lot of impact in the community. Some more pictures of those, you might recognize, some of these, Boneyard Arts Festival, C4A, CU Folk and Roots, and many others have been recipients. The Boneyard Creek Public Art Project continues now in the construction phase, and the public artist, Jack Mackey, has been working very closely with the design team as this project has moved into this new phase. You can see some pictures here of what some of the walls will look like that he designed. The Murals on Glass Project provides opportunities for local artists, as well as beautifying the downtown Urbana environment. In the first cycle of this program, we had 100 submissions from Champaign County artists and selected three to spotlight on the Urbana parking deck in downtown, as well as the Urbana Business Association windows. And the artists that were spotlighted are Lisa Kessler, Kelly Eddington, and Larry Steinbauer, who some of you may know because he runs Wind Water and Light in Lincoln Square Mall, and he designed the Lincoln, which has been very popular. Additionally, the Public Arts Commission was able to install three new sculptures on temporary two-year leases in partnership with the Public Art League, and two of those are designed to celebrate Urbana's status as a Tree City USA, and those are located on Main Street. They are Fortitude Four by Mark Krueke and The Wind in the Trees by Catherine Hoskinson. And then another one was installed on Phila Road near CVS, and that is Splintering Continuity by Beth Nybek. And we also have Fan Fair by Sean Moran and Bench Nine by Barry Hee Hee Man, who, those pieces were installed four years ago, or two years, they were on one two-year lease, and then that lease was renewed. As I mentioned before, in this past year, the Public Arts Commission added performances by local bands to the monthly art workshops at Urbana's Market at the Square, and over 600 people participated in those six events over the market season. There was a wide variety of music that was presented, jazz, folk music, singer-songwriter, and those have proved to be very popular, and the commission is excited to continue those into the next year. And here's that picture of that Barbershop Quartet. I think maybe Greg took that picture, but it's a good one, from the dedication of the Urbana High School sign. The commission continues to make progress on a priority they have set as art in the schools. The commission's been coordinating very closely with King School to create some educational programming related to the King Park Public Art Project. This hit a little bit of a snag when there were some issues with our original artists on this project, but we've continued to work with King School and are looking forward to collaborating with them to provide some educational opportunities for the youth there, including a visit from the artist that we're working with now, Preston Jackson, as well as some other programming in partnership with their fine arts teachers at King School. We've also been able to collaborate with Urbana schools through an Artist of the Corridor Show, which was photographed by Wiley Elementary School fifth graders, and the reception that they had in which they sang and demonstrated how they created the photos was attended by 60 people, and it was a pretty fun event. So, we've enjoyed partnering with them. As part of after-school enrichment class at Yankee Ridge Elementary School, the Public Arts Program also had a presence there and did a day of the class about public art in Urbana, and the kids who were K through 2 were asked to identify where sculptures in Urbana were located, and they knew where all of them were, which was pretty impressive. Because I don't know, I think I know some adults who wouldn't be able to identify the site of some of the sculptures we have on display, so that was impressive. As I mentioned, we've had several great exhibitions for the Artist of the Corridor Space. The mayor mentioned the successful event that we had this past weekend for Liu Zhonggang, the Chinese artist who was visiting, and we had 55 people attend that event this weekend, and you can see some photos of that, as well as some of the other events we've presented this year for that. The Art Now UPTV Program continues to present a 30-minute episode that's new every month that features interviews with local artists working in a variety of media, and the commissioners have worked to produce eight new episodes this year, not only spotlighting visual artists, but also artists working in theater, film, et cetera. And those are available online and can be watched at any time. And now we are working with artist Preston Jackson, who's based in Peoria and the Urbana Park District, to create a sculpture for King Park. Preston Jackson will be visiting us on Thursday to get started on this project, so the commission's very excited to get things going with that. I try to keep pretty good attendance records of the events that the Public Arts Commission does throughout the year, and by my count, we've had nearly 1,000 people participate in the programs that we have offered, just in terms of live participation. In terms of the arts grants, that number is much more. And the Public Arts Commission is excited to continue the success in the next year. The program of work is fairly similar to the programs that were presented in the past year, and those are outlined in the packet, as well as the expenditures assigned with them. I'd be happy to answer any questions or provide any additional information.
Brandon?
Yeah, Christina, thanks. I wondered if you could just describe, because last year's funding levels weren't included in the memo, if you could just describe for us what budget cuts there were in the program from last year to this year. I know I saw a few programs that were zeroed out, that had had activity in the past, but I didn't get a sense in total if the public arts activities that are part of the program are getting cut 5% or 10% or 15%. I just couldn't, because we couldn't see last year's versus this year's. So can you give us a sense of what has been reduced and gone away?
Well, what the big change is, is there were some encumbered funds for particular projects, and that money has been spent. For instance, previously, there was a little over $1,500 that remained encumbered for the Royer District, and at this point, that money has been spent, in fact, for the Urbana High School sign project, or, I'm sorry, for the sign for the hotel that has not yet been installed. That was actually not funded through the Public Arts Fund, that was funded through another line item. The rest of these are pretty similar from last year. The marketing line item has been increased, and that has to do with the fact that in the past, we hadn't really spent what had been budgeted for marketing, but now that we have this great partnership working with the UBA and the city and Urbana's Market at the Square, we've been able to do a lot more advertising to raise awareness of the program, because even though the program has been around for five years, there are still people who say, what's the Urbana Public Arts Program? I didn't know you offered arts grants. So, the commission has seen it as a big priority to raise awareness. Tom?
Dennis?
So, oh, Tom.
Oh, no, go ahead. Go ahead, Dennis.
All right. Well, yeah, I guess I was a little bit disappointed to see that for the funding for the next year, for the Royer Arts and Architectural District, the Arts Commission decided that planning was fine, but no action, and that the funding position would be zero. And it then struck me as like perhaps even more, of more concern, it says here that the portion of the, it said a portion of the Urbana High School plaque and all of the Urbana Landmark plaque were funded by line items that were outside the Public Arts Fund in coordination with the mayor's office. Okay, I guess I appreciate that information and the mayor's support. It says that no additional public fund expenditures are planned, this is talking about the Royer District, and the future events and plaques will not use public art funds as a funding source. And I'm trying to understand the thinking of the Arts Commission, if the Royer's Arts and Architectural District has no support from the Arts Commission this year or future funding, does that mean that the Arts Commission hasn't, doesn't value its existence or its potential?
Well, Councilman Royer, it is included in the program plan, so that in itself, I think, suggests that the Public Arts Commission sees the Royer District as a priority. In terms of the line, no additional public art fund expenditures are planned, and future events and plaques will use non-public art funding sources. Because the Public Arts Commission did not budget additional money last year either, the money that was available was encumbered, it had been budgeted in the previous year, fiscal year 1112. So they essentially did the same thing the year before, just because they weren't able to budget an expenditure for that. And I think what they thought was because they had worked with other line items to produce some of those events, perhaps there would be those types of opportunities again. I think also, when Greg Chu was speaking, he talked a lot about, you know, working in partnership on some of these events, and I think that's been very successful. For instance, the first Royer plaque dedication we did, I think we had, you know, maybe 10 to 15 people attend. Now, it was the coldest day of that winter, which was a warm winter, so that might have been part of it, but there was certainly, certainly not the attendance, you know, that was generated when the event was presented in partnership with the Urbana High School, you know, where, you know, nearly 100 people came. So I think that by working with partners, that's another way that the Public Arts Commission can, you know, do these types of events with a limited budget and make their resources go farther.
And I agree that partnering with people who are willing to participate in that makes the event just that much more important. But without any funding to put the plaque up or to make the, to create the event in the first place that brings these performances together, undercuts the entire intent of, you know, creating, using the arts district and growing the arts district, which I think, you know, if you look at any marketing plan for a community, people often talk about the importance of arts districts to bring both people to the downtown as a focus of attention and interest, and, you know, it's a tourism tool to market the community, you know, in the creation of the identity of the city. So, while, I guess I just have a concern for the longevity of the intent to make this a, to use it as a revitalization tool for the downtown, and there's no assurance that from the general fund, this line item can be maintained in the future, and without putting up any additional plaques, we're actually passing the point where there are potential anniversaries of buildings, 100-year-old anniversaries of the buildings are occurring this year and next, which will apparently be completely missing, one of them being the Unitarian Church on Green Street. And we've missed one actually already, the house on Green Street, on Elm Street, that once was the home of, one of Urbana's most famous hatmaker. So, if we're not paying attention, we're missing some, I think, not only marketing opportunities for the city and its historical and artistic background. So I guess this is a concern of mine, and when I read that, there's no, that the Arts Commission is not really planning anything, it sounds like Greg Chu's thoughts are kind of like on hold or out the window, so I just wanted some clarification.
Tom?
Oh, sorry.
Tom, did you have an answer?
Well, I was just going to mention that, you know, the Royer District does appear in the Public Arts Commission's five-year plan, so it seems that that would suggest that they do have that in their long-term plans. Tom, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Well, I just wanted to say that over the years, the Public Arts Commission has had several projects where they do a one-time funding, and then there's a possibility that that funding encumbers over a few years, and so Royer is one example. Another example is Art in the Schools. That's a project that I think was originally budgeted in 1011, and it's been encumbered, and it will be used, but it's not something that they've put additional funding into each year, because that funding is still available. So, I don't think, the fact that they have not put additional money towards Royer doesn't mean that that can't happen in the future, and it also doesn't mean that they're not interested. Obviously, Art in the Schools is very important to the commission, and they did fund it, and at some point, that funding will be used, but they just don't put additional money towards it every year. And there have been other projects which are similar, where they do a one-time funding and then, and then do the project, and then have to explore potential funding in the future, some future date. So, there have been other projects like that, is what I'm getting at.
Diane, and then Brandon?
Thanks, Christina, for the report and for a very successful year. I, I think I probably had the same reaction as Brandon did, as far as trying to figure out how this coming year's Public Arts Fund is going to look compared to last year, and looking through these sources of revenue and expenditures, there's a lot that's not here compared to what we see in the budget. And so, for example, there's no personnel costs associated with these, on the expenditure side of things, and the totals presented here are much lower than what we see in the budget. So how does, first of all, why is there no personnel costs in here? And secondly, how does what you're presenting here coordinate with what we're going to see in a couple months in the budget? Because it just looks completely different.
Sure. So, what I'm presenting tonight is the program plan, so this is what the Public Arts Commission discusses as far as, you know, what types of programs they want to put their energy toward for the next year. Line items like the personnel costs have not traditionally been included in that discussion, so that does not appear within here. Or, for instance, there are particular projects like the Boneyard Project, like the King Park Project, which have come from other areas in the budget, so they are not part of this budgeting process that the Public Arts Commission does.
So this is strictly Public Arts Commission-controlled?
That's correct.
So, I guess I'd repeat Brandon's question, if maybe you don't know an answer yet, but what will the fiscal year 1314 Public Arts budget look like compared to this year?
Looks like Tom might have an answer.
Tom wants to feel that one, looks like.
The, the primary difference and, we're still working through the budget process with the mayor and with the finance department, but the primary difference is, there has traditionally been a amount of money from the general fund, or more accurately, from the capital improvement budget that goes to the Public Art Fund, and we have not included that in what you see before you, because we weren't, we're working through the budget process, and we're not sure if that money will be available. So I guess, that's the main change between last year and this year, is what you see before you is very similar, the program is primarily funded through TIF districts, but the major difference is you're not seeing, and I believe the amount is $15,000. There's been traditionally a $15,000 transfer from capital improvements to the Public Art Fund, and we didn't include that at this point, because we're not sure through budgeting if that's going to happen or not.
Mayor Pressing?
Yeah, this is just a building block of the budget. This is the program, but it's not the budget.
That's clear now, it wasn't when I was trying to figure out. I had one more comment.
Diane?
I know that the city, the mayor appoints the Public Arts Commission, the city council approves, and then the Arts Commission then appoints many selection, not many, but appoints selection committees and jury panels for particular pieces, but we never see who those panels are, or even know who to thank for their public service. So I wondered, where will, do you think is the appropriate place to just provide a list of names of the people who have served on these committees and juries? And I do think it's important, because they're also involved in spending public funds, so that should be public information as well. So, where, could that be included in your annual report?
I'm sure it could. It's always It's, it's always listed, well, usually on a project-by-project basis in the Public Arts Commission memos.
Right.
So, I mean, those are public information, but if, if you'd like that to be an addition in future annual reports, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, I'd like to see that, just to know who's been contributing to this process.
Sure. And I mean, you know, especially with the arts grants projects, you know, those juries, they're reviewing, you know, twenty to thirty applications, so they really put in a lot of volunteer time, which we really appreciate. I mean, we couldn't do that program without them.
It'd be nice to be able to publicly acknowledge that work.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Brandon, did you have something? Dennis?
Yeah. I have had, I have had a couple discussions with some, some participants in the jury process, and my understanding is that, once the jury makes a decision, it's presented to the Public Arts Commissioners themselves in a report, but the Public Arts Commissioners themselves never actually vote on any of the selections. Is that correct?
Not necessarily. For instance, with the Urbana Arts Grants, the jury presents recommendations, but it's the Public Arts Commission that approves those. So, I mean, with all of our selection panels, the selection panels present recommendations and...
But, my understanding is that they get the recommendation, but they don't see the other choices, because those have already been eliminated by the selection panel that is like a subcommittee.
That's...
So, there's no way of them evaluating what might have been chosen, because they are not presented those selections?
That has been the way, that has functioned in the past.
So, so the Commission never actually makes any decision at all about public art that's selected?
Well, for our selection panels, there are always Commission representatives, so there's a subcommittee that's involved in the decision. So, there's always two members of the Public Arts Commission that are involved in the process. So, they are on the selection committee, they see all of the choices.
Brandon?
Yeah, my last question was just about the, the Royer plaque idea. I guess if in the past, it's worked to have some other line items that can fund plaques and, plus the whole community collaboration to pull off events and celebrate some key history, do you think that's possible? Do you know what line items those are? And if, in this coming year, if there are one or two really great anniversaries of buildings, that we'd be able to continue to use some of those other line items to be able to put up a plaque and with the community's help, have an event or a celebration?
Tom, do you want to field that one?
Go ahead, Tom.
The other line item that we've specifically used is a historic preservation, it's, it's, it's called Historic Preservation Cost Encumbered. It's within the ED Fund, which is a J-18 Fund. Now, there was a larger discussion about the long-term health of the J-18 Fund, because that fund has no recurring revenues. It is a fund that we've used for a lot of different projects, but again, very few recurring revenues. But, that's the, that is the fund that we use to fund the, the Urbana Landmark Hotel Royer plaque, and I can tell you that there's just under $3,000 available in that line item. Now, that line item is being shared by a couple different things. For example, we provided some small refreshments for the Lincoln Tree Dedication. That's another item that came out of that line item. So, it's a general Historic Preservation Costs line item.
Robert, did you have something? Okay. Charlie?
So, how would we pursue, I don't know if other council members found this interesting, you know, a sign like the Lincoln sign that we have at, at Race and Maine? If we want to do something like that for Royer, first, I mean, is there interest here amongst us? I see one nod, another nod, I don't, I see three, three of us maybe, I don't know if there are four or five, I would hope there are four or five. But, if we wanted to do something like that, would that be something we would request of the Public Arts Commission to pursue, and how would we do that?
I believe that was funded through a grant.
Tom?
Yeah, I, I believe that was funded through a grant, and that, the sign over by BUC Bank, that, yes, I don't have the exact cost, but it was between 10 and $15,000. So, it was a considerable cost, and if we were looking to commission a, a sign, a similar sign with an art component, it would probably be at least a couple years' worth of encumbered funds being rolled together to, to be able to afford that.
And wasn't that a project of the Historic Preservation Commission?
Mayor pressing.
It was looking for Lincoln. It was a state project.
And that was, and that was a grant that came from the federal government, because it was the bicentennial of Lincoln, and they made this, you know, exerted effort to fund Lincoln sites.
I think we should, we have a lot of things that we want to do, and I think we're going to have to look at what the budget is, because you can't have everything.
But, can you have something?
Oh, of course, we can always have something.
All right, thank you so much for your update. Next, we have motion approving the Public Arts Program Plan. So, this is not a budget necessarily.
Right, it's the plan itself.
It's the plan. So, is there a motion?
A move approval.
So, it's been moved by Diane and seconded by Robert. Are, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I don't like it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have ordinance number 2013-04-036, an ordinance amending Chapter 16 of the Urbana City Code. This is a noise ordinance. We have Jeff Angstrom and Robert Meyer.
Good evening. All right, so this is an update to the noise ordinance. This is something that was, it came out of a council goal, council goal six, quality of life, ordinance changes. The, the language was develop and enact an industrial noise ordinance that limits noise generated after normal business hours from industries and commercial businesses. So, that was really our goal with this ordinance update here. It was a combined effort of community development, Public Works, and the engineering, or, sorry, Environmental Sustainability Division, as well as the Legal Division and the Police Department. Our goal was to assess the current ordinance, find out where it's failing us and where it can be improved, bit of a, little bit on a process. We did a lot of research on other cities ordinances and general standards and practices for containing industrial noise. Just compare it and contrast what works, what's feasible, what's legally defensible, things like that. In terms of noise issues, just a quick background, for noise issues, we're looking at a couple different things, public nuisance versus safety and hearing loss types of concerns. Pardon me. The, the OSHA deals with hearing loss and safety, things like that. So, the city and state have laws for public nuisances involving noises. Some of the aspects we look at are frequency, intensity, and duration. Frequency is what pitch it is, measured in hertz. Intensity is how loud is it perceived to be. So, it's volume, generally measured in decibels, and that's a kind of complex math formula involving a logarithm and two different air pressure levels. And then, duration, this isn't really something that we're dealing with so much, but time, time of exposure to a sound is something that's going to affect hearing loss. Other factors we looked at, day versus night, it's, noises are a lot more annoying at nighttime when you're trying to sleep. Certain areas of the city have busy streets, other areas are rather quiet, certain areas are next to factories and things like that. Another factor is constant background noise versus regular bursts of noise. Constant background can kind of fade into the background, bursts are more disruptive. And distance from sound is another thing. As the further you get from a sound, you, the less intense it is. So, in terms of what we're looking at, for our purposes, we're mostly looking at issues of disturbing the peace, loud parties, stereos, lawn mowers, air conditioners, industrial equipment, things like that. The majority of these types of things are isolated incidents, parties or musics or a large, a loud car squealing down the street, and pretty much, a very large percentage of these types of things are dealt with by the Police Department. And also, it's important to know, most of these items are dealt with on an enforce, or on a complaint basis. So, we're not proactively looking for noise violations. Here's a table of some common sound levels, decibel levels. So, you see the zero to thirty range, you're talking about really quiet things, leaves rustling, whispers. But then, pretty quickly, from thirty to sixty, you're getting up to a louder, things that are more audible and present, things like conversational speech, air conditioners. Then, by the time you get up to ninety decibels, you're getting into the dangerous level, where hearing loss may occur if you're not properly protected. Okay, so what are our current regulations and why are they in need of repair? There's two levels of noise regulations that the city currently deals with. The first level is our city ordinance. The second level is the state's Illinois Pollution Control Board, their statutes. So, for the city ordinance, we have a couple different categories of noise, but pretty much everything falls under what's defined as loud and raucous noise, which is currently defined as any sound because of its volume or duration and character annoys, disturbs, injures, or endangers the comfort, health, peace, or safety of a reasonable person of ordinary sensibilities within the city limits. And that's, that's the definition we're proposing to keep. It's working well for us. It covers a wide variety of things. The reasonable person standard is something that's been upheld, and the police are comfortable issuing tickets for warnings and tickets for those types of things. Also, within our ordinance, we have a couple exceptions. Some of the exceptions are for things like emergency vehicles, alarms, permitted events like fireworks displays or concerts, religious activities, et cetera. The last exception deals with commercial and industrial noise. So, it's not considered loud and raucous if it's noise which is a normal byproduct of commercial and industrial activity, when that activity producing the noise is occurring on premises, where such activity is permitted under the zoning ordinance, and where it's not in violation of the Illinois Pollution Control Board statutes. So, this is the part of our current ordinance that references the Illinois Pollution Control Board limits, and this is really what we have, all we have to fall back on if we want to enforce against industrial noise or commercial noise. And, the Public Works and Environmental Sustainability Division staff mostly enforces these types of things. They work with the property owners to abate any potential concerns. Now, the reason our current ordinance is a little difficult to enforce and to maintain is this reference to the Illinois Pollution Control Board standards. The Pollution Control Board standards are very complex, technical, and it's techni, it's frankly something we really don't have the capacity to measure and enforce here. So, it divides land use classifications, land uses into different classifications. So, there's different standards for noise emitted from each type of land use to another type of land use. That's pretty simple. Different levels of noise limits for daytime versus nighttime, that's no problem. Where we run into a problem is that decibel limits are, they differ based on frequency range. So, the hear, human ear can hear about 20 hertz up to like twenty or ten kilohertz, 20 kilohertz maybe, depending on the age of the person. So, each different frequency range has a different loudness that people perceive. So, for something with a really low frequency, around 50 hertz, 100 hertz, you can get pretty loud before it becomes annoying. So, up to, say, 69 decibels for something that's 125 hertz. Whereas, on the high level, if you, once you get up to the 40, 45 decibel range, if you're in a higher frequency range, it's, it really starts to be a piercing noise that's quite annoying. So, that's why they've broken this chart down in this way. This is an example of one of the several charts in the statute. The problem comes in trying to take measurements and enforce to see if it's an actual violation of the state standards. It's a really complex measurement standards. I didn't include those with your packet, it's another 30 pages, but you have to set up microphones at specific heights, take specific measurements at different frequencies, and it's, it's all stuff we really don't have the equipment or the training to deal with. So, if we do, ever do need to take a case to the Illinois Pollution Control Board, we would need to hire a sound consultant to help us with that. Fortunately, it's not come to that yet. So, a quick overview of the issues, difficult to enforce the Pollution Control Board standards. It would require us to hire a sound consultant. We've got this loud and raucous provision, it's working pretty well for us for most of our noises, automobiles, parties, et cetera. And another issue that we'll discuss in a little bit is that construction noise, our provisions are not in line with the City of Champaign and Savoy. So, a quick review of our research, lot of, lot of cities, well, not a lot, a number of cities either reference the Illinois Pollution Control Board standards, or they just duplicate one of the tables from within those standards. And that's what, the way we currently go is we reference the standards. As we discussed, it's, it's difficult to enforce going that way. A-rated frequency rating, this is another method of, of taking sound measurements. The A-rated frequency rating looks at all the different frequencies, and it gives a higher weight to the most common frequencies of noise. And, most of the noise meters that you see on the market actually read at the A-rated frequency rating instead of at any particular frequency. So, many cities, the vast majority of cities that have adopted standards with decibel limits, they go with an A-rated frequency rating. Absolute versus relative limits, some cities have a relative limit where they say, no noise shall be five decibels over the ambient sound level. And that's, that kind of helps in terms of, if you're in a neighborhood where you know there's a lot of noise, then you know the ambient level would be pretty low. there's a lot of noise, then you know the ambient level would be pretty loud, so people who complain might not have a way to go with that. The problem is, when you're in a neighborhood next to a factory and the factories go in half the time, when do you take the ambient reading? So we thought we would probably want to go with an absolute limit instead of a relative limit for those reasons. Perceptible sounds, this is a kind of a clause that's similar to our loud and raucous reasonable person, our clause. So the City of Champaign, some other cities in central Illinois, and Champaign County also go with this perceptible sound. Basically, if someone calls up and complains about a noise, they'll send an officer out, the officer goes into their apartment or house, and if you can hear an external noise while you're inside the complainant's house, then that external noise is in violation. So that's how Champaign does it. Average conversational level, some cities don't have an absolute limit, they might say average conversational level is the limit. So that's a even more objective, even more subjective standard, kind of. And mechanical stationary noise, this is something we glommed onto in our research. It was from the City of Chicago, we saw, was the first one that had this standard. Mechanical stationary noise is a way to get at noise that comes from a mechanical source without tying it into land use. So instead of saying our level, noise limit for industrial properties is this, or our noise level for commercial properties or residential properties is that, you just say, any mechanical stationary noise in the city cannot exceed a certain level. And this is what we're proposing to go with. So just to go through our proposed changes real quickly, the main idea is to keep what works, i.e. the loud and raucous provision's been working well for us, and also to make changes to make it easier to measure noise and to enforce against it. So we tried to limit our changes to the scope of the council goal here, which was dealing with industrial and commercial noises. That being said, we did have a few structural changes suggested by the legal division. So it's not just a small change, small ordinance change, but it's largely structural changes that just change the flow of the ordinance. They don't really change the intent or many of the standards, except for that part about mechanical stationary noise. So just going through the ordinance, we added a section on the intent, just kind of a policy blanket statement. We added some definitions of terms used within the ordinance, boundary line, complainants, mechanical stationary noise is the big one. Also, construction noise, we modified that, or construction equipment, we modified that definition, I'll discuss that in a second here. Section sixteen dash three is the main structure of our ordinance. It says loud and raucous noises are prohibited. So we're keeping that pretty much the same as it was before. Just a couple minor language tweaks to clarify some things. Section sixteen dash five, that looks at the exceptions to the loud and raucous provision. So this is the section that we've changed to take out that reference to the Illinois Pollution Control Board and instead add a reference to mechanical stationary noise. Also, a couple minor clarifications, things like clock towers and bells. So section sixteen dash seven, this is the construction noise section. The definition, we clarified it, we broadened it to include all types of construction equipment and also to add maintenance equipment. The prior definition, or it wasn't even definition, it just referenced construction equipment that was powered by fuel or electricity. So there was a large swath of things like air-powered pneumatic equipment that was completely left out. Also, lawn mowers, things like that, were never explicitly included, so that was a problem for police enforcing noise complaints. So we're proposing to add maintenance equipment and that type of equipment into the definition. We're proposing a slight tweak on the times construction noise would be allowed. Currently, the ordinance says it's allowed eight AM to eight PM, Monday to Saturday, and noon to eight PM on Sunday. Other cities, Champaign, Savoy, they start their noise at ten, at seven AM. And Champaign actually allows it all the way through ten o'clock. We're just proposing to change it to seven AM to ten, or sorry, seven AM to eight PM every day. And this is, like I said, kind of came out of our talks with the police department, the lieutenants who deal with noise. Also, it's out of concern for construction workers, especially roofers. They have a dangerous job, it gets very hot, and there's health risks if they're up too late during the day. So an extra hour in the morning would really help them make it safer. Construction noise is still considered loud and raucous, and police will still handle those complaints. And I should have framed this earlier, all construction noise, caveat, all limits on construction noise are only within six hundred feet of a residence. Powering on through here. Section sixteen dash nine is the meat of the ordinance where we're proposing to add the mechanical stationary noise provisions. So these are going to cover industrial noises, commercial noises, as well as residential noises. If someone's air conditioner goes out of whack and starts acting out really loud, we consider that mechanical stationary noise. Also, things like trucks, food trucks, trailers, anything with a generator or a refrigeration unit attached to it, that's considered mechanical stationary noise, and that would be dealt with here. Our proposed limits for mechanical stationary noise, sixty decibels during daytime hours, seven AM to ten PM, and fifty-five decibels during nighttime hours. Again, these are on the A-weighted frequency measurements, so we're not measuring individual frequencies, we're taking that averaged frequency, which is standard practice for most ordinances. We were proposing a little provision to say any noise over eighty decibels is going to be considered loud and raucous. That way, if something gets really loud into a dangerous level, the police can show up and shut it down without having to go through our mechanical stationary procedures. Another aspect of mechanical stationary noise, this is something that Public Works is going to continue to deal with. If we get a complaint, they'll immediately call the owner, try to deal with it. If the noise keeps going on for three days or more, we're going to require a remediation plan. We're going to say, hey, something's wrong, you're not controlling this noise that started up, so you need to, within seven days, tell us how you're going to fix it. And then the noise itself must be fixed within thirty days. And to back up these provisions, we're proposing a fine of two hundred dollars per offense per day. The sixty daytime, fifty-five nighttime decibel level, we think that's a pretty reasonable level. It's maybe a little slightly below what we've surveyed from other communities. Other communities ranged from forty up to eighty in terms of their industrial noise limits. Most of them were up in the sixty, sixty-five, seventy level. But we did some field testing. We don't think that a level of fifty-five at night or sixty during day is going to cause any new violations. Most of the things we tested were below those levels. The one that was above sixty was dark container, and they're currently undergoing a million-dollar plus project to bring their noise levels down. So by this level, we feel those noise levels are going to be down below the level of our proposed limit. Outcomes, here's what we're hoping to have as outcomes. We're going to keep the loud and raucous noise procedures, and the fines will not change. So from the police, police department standpoint, pretty much everything's going to stay the same. Automobile noise procedures, that's not going to change at all. Construction times would change, but procedures would stay the same for issuing those fines. The city would be able to measure and enforce the commercial and industrial noise limits more easily, and we'd have a mechanism to bring those violators into compliance on our own, instead of going through Illinois Pollution Control Board, which would involve hiring a consultant in a lengthy process. And just to note, Illinois Pollution Control Board standards, it's state law, it still applies, complainants can still pursue those cases through the state if they want to. So that's my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. We've got Robert Myers, we've got city attorney, and we've got Public Works here, too.
Mayor Pressing?
You said the fines would stay the same. Have we collected fines, significant fines?
Not for industrial noise. The police do fines for parties and stereos, things like that. I'm not sure what the level of collection is. Usually, the procedure is they give a warning on the first trip out, then there's the standard amount for different offenses for the first offense, and then they work with the legal division to figure out what the fine will be on subsequent offenses.
How do our fines compare with other cities?
I think they're generally in line.
When's the last time we increased them? Do you know?
I don't know.
Brandon?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I've been kind of under the weather all day, so I think I'm going to excuse myself early here, but I support this. I think it's, it is a big change, but this is a step in the right direction. I think this will make things much clearer. I know the time changes, especially the Sunday morning, will be something we'll have to explain to neighbors, but I support it, and I think it's, I think it's logical for the safety of doing construction work. So I support this and the remaining items on the agenda. Thanks.
Get better soon. Robert?
I had a couple suggestions with regard to the construction noise. My experience was with the roofers, for example, in the summertime, when it gets very hot, that timeframe, they want to start like at six AM. And the reason for that is because by ten o'clock, they cannot really stand on that roof, if they're doing shingles, for example. You might want to check on that time, that might be helpful to the construction industry. I know it doesn't help the people in terms of noise, but they can't get up there after a certain period of time.
Yeah. We tried to strike a balance between the not disturbing neighbors too early and letting the roofers get out there a little earlier.
Yeah. But they don't, they have a short window of time, so that's why I was suggesting that. The other one was on industrial stationary noise. One option that the city might, if there's a mediation requirement, especially in mechanical systems on buildings, for example, the real issue becomes whether or not that equipment can be attenuated, for example. That would be something that you would want to recommend to the factory workers or the owners or whatever, that that would be the easiest way to reduce that sound very quickly within the timeframe you were talking about, but it might be costly for them. That's all I got.
Eric?
So the only noise issues that I've heard from my constituents are, number one, garbage haulers early in the morning, but it looks to me as though they're sort of exempt. I mean, the noise that they make is irreducible, and they're on a public right away. And then the only other complaint I've had is from the Carl helicopters bringing, bringing people in low over our neighborhood, but I see that aircraft are also specifically exempted. So I don't see, you know, except for, I guess, just sort of trying to reason with the noisemakers, that there's no, there's no recourse really for those particular noises in this ordinance that I can see.
That's generally the case, things like the air, the medevac, we really can't put controls on when they fly that. All we can do is try to talk to operators and reduce the noise.
Robert?
Well, I thought the FAA required, for example, the helicopters to come in on a specific glide path, irregardless of the winds. And if it's supposed to come in over residential areas that are, well, they limit the residential area, like they'd have to come from the north as they circle around and come around it, I think, that's what I, my understanding was.
Oh, so actually, maybe there is an issue there, because they don't really, if they came, for example, along University Avenue, nobody would care that much, but when they, when they buzz over people's houses, that is, okay, 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 we can check on that.
Charlie?
Yeah, well, I think the move, unlike Brandon, I think the move to eight, from eight AM to seven AM will tick off a lot of people in my neighborhood. And, you know, we make this exception for garbage haulers. If we need to make an exception to the eight AM, maybe it's for roofers. That would, that I can see as legitimate complaint. So I'm not, I, right now, unless you're going to put garbage trucks in there with the seven AM, there's no way I'm going to, to accept a change in the time. Sunday, I can accept an eight AM start. I think that, that sort of provision has changed, much as I wouldn't mind one day of just peace and quiet in the morning, regardless, but, but unless we're going to include garbage trucks in this, I don't think I can sell this to my neighborhood. The other thing is, you know, I can guarantee you that between four and five o'clock tomorrow morning, I will be woken up by the multifamily recycling truck next door. It's a lot noisier than the regular recycling truck. They try to sneak in there, and they wake me up every Tuesday morning at, between four and six AM. So I'll be, I'll be woken up tomorrow morning, as usual. So the only other comment I had here was, I was trying to understand idling vehicles, which is, let me get to that page here. You don't point it out in the actual discussion, but you mentioned it on, it's on, it's section sixteen eight, motor vehicles and automobile horns. motor vehicles and automobile horns. In A, it shall be unlawful for any person to operate any motor or engine of a motor vehicle which weighs in excess of four tons for a consecutive period longer than two minutes while standing on private property. What about, you know, why are we not including the public right-of-way there? You know, because that's another issue, you know, vehicles idling for no particular It's, you know, polluting, among other things.
Yep. So that provision was taken directly from the current ordinance, and we really didn't put too much thought into it. We were mostly trying to limit ourselves to the industrial aspects of this, and then construction noise got thrown in there. But that was outside of the scope of what we were looking at.
I wouldn't mind seeing that expanded to include a larger area, to include the public right-of-way within, you know, 150 feet of a residence. Because I see no reason for a truck to be idling on the streets, even, you know, even if it's on Lincoln Avenue in front of a fraternity or sorority, it just doesn't need to be idling. I see diesel buses sitting all the time, idling. Again, no reason with a modern diesel engine that it needs to idle.
Diane?
Jeff, were the construction times you recommended the same as Champagne's and Savoy's?
No. Like I mentioned, Champagne's goes until 10:00 p.m.
But the starting time in the mornings?
Starting times is the same.
They're all seven o'clock, seven days a week?
Yep.
Dennis?
Well, there might be some of these issues that might be refined, and I can appreciate Charlie's concerns. And Eric, yeah, the one thing I do remember that most people talk to me about, as far as noise, is the backing up of the garbage trucks. It's really not the loading of them, but it's when they back up, and you go beep, 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 and it's, you know, six in the morning.
Oh, you haven't heard the one that goes by my house twice, you know, twice on Mondays and...
I don't have the pleasure of experiencing that myself, but I can picture it. But on the other hand, you know, just to comment on, you know, to put something in the positive, this, the intent of your work, I really appreciate, Jeff, because the greatest concern that I've had over and over again from people who live in my ward is the noise from, I used to call it Solocup, and now it's...
Dart.
Dart. Dart. And people who have lived right there in their homes or right next to it, and they have gone through some rather curious remedial steps, the first being to plant a row of Arbovita, which probably in 30 years may affect sound perhaps in the future. So I've had persons calling me up, like every other day, saying, again, I could not sleep last night. What are they doing over there at 3:00 in the morning? What is all that racket? And, well, we've learned that there have been mechanical failures, there's been insulation falling off of certain parts of the roof and ventilane systems, and pipes that come up and down to suck the materials, the plastic particles out of the train beds. But over and all, and I give Robert Myers a vote of thanks in this instance, he has gone over there quite a few times to talk to the management. It's taken about two years and turnover and ownership to get to the point we are today. And if we adopt this body of legislation, we'll finally be able to address the industrial noise that people in my neighborhood have complained about for so many months and two or more summers without any progress. So at this point, we're really happy to know that at DART, they're probably going to complete some of their soundproofing. But I think if it hadn't been for the constant complaints that have been given to that industry, there would be a lot less progress. And so, you know, we're working with them, we're trying to be good neighbors, they're trying to be good neighbors with us. But with this ordinance, I think we finally are getting some, you know, getting somewheres. At least, we know that we can legitimately complain, because we have our own standards of measurement and enforcement, so this is really positive. And I just want to say thanks. On the behalf of my constituents, there's a couple people I know who are just going to faint. With pleasure, I hope. So, I mean, I'll make the motion to forward this to city council with a recommendation of approval.
Second.
And having said so, we can talk about, you know, fine-tuning some of the problems that some of us have about certain parts of it.
All right. So we have a motion by Dennis and a second by Diane. Is there further discussion? Charlie?
Well, I was hoping to be able to talk about this a little bit more and find out a few of the answers. I know Bill's gone and sat down there. I don't know if you had some additional stuff to add, Bill, or you just wanted to sit down?
I have nothing to say hearing the motion.
Oh, okay.
Looks like he's moral support for this experience.
I see, I see. Okay, well, yeah, I'd like to include garbage trucks in the residential R1 through R7 at 7:00 a.m. So...
I'm just going to speak again, why I would speak against that is because we've been informed of the reason that they need to start at earlier times is not just like, oh, we need to start because we want to get our day done. They actually have times where they have to deliver, when they have to have their trucks unloaded by in order for it to be processed correctly. Am I wrong in saying that? I believe I remember them saying, like, there's plans that they have to have their deliveries done by 3:00 o'clock. Am I correct in that, Bill?
The issue of haulers with the OSHA backup horns has been around for many, many years. Most of you, some of you may remember, environmental manager Rod Fletcher and I met with the haulers on about three occasions from the council in the past that raised this issue. And the sum and substance of those discussions with all the haulers represented was basically boiled down to this. If you have a complaint, bring it to our attention. We will revise the schedule to not let that happen again, but don't impose 6:00 a.m., 7:00 a.m. limits, because not only, which you brought up, council member, but the more primary reason was safety, that if they're making, on campus area in particular, pickups when students are out and about and faculty and staff, and they're backing up the vehicles, which they're doing, it's more dangerous. So it was a safety issue, and yes, getting to the landfill to drop off. However, years ago when Rod and I met, it was more of an issue because they had to drive to Danville or Clinton. Now, thank goodness, we have on North Lincoln Avenue the Allied drop-off site, so that's a much shorter round trip. So that argument has gone away a little bit, but it's the safety issue in getting in early in the morning, not so many people around. And they pleaded, and we agreed, that we would merely contact them, and they said they would self-enforce, self-impose their routes accordingly. Now, in theory, yes, if someone's at 6:00 in the morning or 5:00 in the morning at location A, we say, don't go there anymore, then there's a new location A somewhere else. Okay? But unfortunately, that's what we came down to. If we want to include haulers, which wasn't to be part of this discussion, that's why I liked the previous motion and second, that's going to take a lot more discussion, I can tell you right now, with the haulers. We can't just tonight include 6:00 a.m. or 7:00 a.m. We have to have a discussion with them, and I think I know the answers already, which I'm telling you tonight.
Right. Even school buses?
We can still do it, and it could be, oh, well, but I'm just saying, they were not in favor of a 6:00 or 7:00 a.m. start time.
Sure. All right, Charlie?
The other two issues that I raised then were, you know, leaving the current 8:00 a.m. time, but making an exception for roofers. Okay, that's the one that seems to need to get started before 8:00 a.m. Everybody else has been able to accommodate 8:00 a.m. just fine, including ourselves. I know, I know, we'd like to start, our own city crews would like to start at 7:00 a.m. as well. But, you know, frankly, except for the hotter summer months, 8:00 a.m. is a perfectly fine starting time.
Bill?
From a Public Works perspective, it would be very helpful for us to have a 7:00 a.m. start. We do have crews and contractors that we have 7:00 to 3:00 a.m., sometimes we go 6:00 to 2:00, straight eight hours, lunch breaks on the site, et cetera. It hamstrings us. We finesse the time at 8:00 a.m., I'll be honest with you, but if it was 7:00 a.m., that would be much better for us, because we are now in summer hours, and we go to about the end of October, early sometime in October. So we're already in the summer hours. The workers love it, and it takes away the heat of the day situation for us, and I hate to be hamstrung with if I have folks coming at 7:00 a.m., that they get to the job site and have to be really, really quiet, you know, until that 8:00 a.m., you know, kicks in. So it would be very helpful for the efficiency of Public Works and for our contractors in town if we didn't have that. I've heard this for years from both contingents.
Diane, did you have something? Eric?
Could we ask, though, for some staff research on the possibility of regulating the helicopter noise, the medevac noise? Because they do sometimes really, really buzz residential areas.
Yep, we'll look into it.
Could I ask similarly for, you know, it's probably more complicated at this point to include idling of vehicles in the right-of-way, similar to the ordinance here on private property? But I'd like to find out what it would take to include idling in general.
I don't remember seeing that in other ordinances in general, but we'll definitely do some research for that.
We have a motion on the table and a second to send this to council with a recommendation for approval. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We'll see that next week. Thank you. Next, we have ordinance number 2013-04-034, an ordinance amending schedule H of Section 23-93 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code requiring stop signs at a certain intersection, Shirts Street at Cottage Grove Avenue and Green Ridge Drive at Country Squire Drive. Bill?
At a recent traffic commission meeting, these two items, they came up for discussion. The traffic engineer, Mr. Smith, recommends that we install one-way stops at these two intersections, eastbound Shirts at Cottage Grove, northbound Green Ridge Drive at Country Squire. That's the recommendation for the traffic commission.
Charlie?
Move to send to council a recommendation for approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Charlie and seconded by Diane to see this next at council with a recommendation for approval. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Next, we have ordinance number 2013-04-035, an ordinance approving the Champagne Urbana Solid Waste Disposal System annual budget fiscal year 2013 through 2014. Take it away, Gil.
As I was looking at this memo, it's time to approve the CUSWARDS budget. CUSWARDS stands for Champagne Urbana Solid Waste Disposal System, and it's been around for 37 years, and I'm beginning to feel real old, because I was around when it was started in a different role 37 years ago. The air governmental agreement that sets up the system requires the council to approve the budgets that are approved by the group annually. The budget is attached to, the proposed budget or the budget that the system approved is Their resolution where they approved it is attached to Mayor Pressing and then city manager Steve Carter, the chairpersons of the group. The major difference of this budget as compared to the one last year, last year we had a significant increase in the donations or the assessments to the City of Champagne, the City of Urbana, and the university to cover the installation of a Leach 8 pumping well, which is being done this summer. And looking at the budget over the last couple of three years, we've had a reduction in some other operating expenses. Our reserve amount is approaching $60,000, which exceeds the $40,000 set by the chairperson as a goal. And so in this year's budget, the chairperson's elected to assess only half of the normal assessment of the communities, which, so when you look at the budget, you'll see a deficit of around $20,000, which gets us down closer to the goal of $40,000 in reserves that they would like to keep. I think $44,000 is what it ends up being based on the proposed budget. You have an ordinance attached which approves the CUSWARDS budget.
Charlie?
Move to send to council with a recommendation for approval.
It's been moved by Charlie and seconded by Robert. Is there any discussion?
If I could speak to it. Gil, can you find another $350,000 somewhere?
I've been looking for 37 years and haven't found that, so I'll keep trying.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
If I could make one comment here real quickly before we go on here, I just told the guys outside, the noise ordinance was extremely, the whole memo was extremely well-written, by the way, and three of them worked on it, with one of them a senior author, but it was very clear, very easy to follow, and they reduced a very technical area to a very understandable document. So, and I meant to show them that the discussion averaged 40.9 decibels through all of Jeff's presentation.
You realize how late this is?
It's got to be quick, or we're going to have to extend time.
We're five hours into our meeting.
None of my fault.
He's been sitting here waiting to do this all night.
Excellent. Here we go.
He's going to tell us he found $350,000 somewhere.
I doubt that.
Titles. Where am I at here? Let's get this thing fired up here. All right. As the title says, it's quick, so I'll make it quick. This is really just, talked to the mayor last week, and this is really just something to whet your appetite for the budget process as it goes along. Although, do I do have a quick question? Every year, we do put a new picture on this. I was wondering, should we put Carl Hospital as the picture on our budget document?
Only if you reverse it out.
All right. All right, here we go. Number of areas we're going to hit, we'll hit a few revenue areas and discuss quickly about some expenses. Sales tax, all right, quickly, what we're seeing is a struggle to get back to 2007. I threw another category at the very bottom, which is our home rule. If we hadn't made the increase, the quarter cent increase, you can see that that also is still hovering at about the 2007 number. So what you're seeing is, is not much growth. Let's talk about sales tax, a couple of issues for us. The major issue that impacts us truthfully is, it's not that our rate's probably not high enough, it's that our sales tax per capita is low. If we can get those numbers more in line with the number of the other communities, raises a significant... a significant amount of revenue for us. That's just a part, part and parcel, that's a process. Economic development, every quarter percent increment for us right now is about $680,000. All right. Let's jump to state income tax. I did two, you'll see in the blue line is the state income tax we currently receive. The red line is, starting about 2008, if it just went up two and a half percent a year, which it has not, and that difference is about $2 million. So, state income tax also has been fairly flat, which is why you'd see the difficulty in proposal. Some of this, a little bit of Ron verbiage, but state income tax increased, we didn't get any of the increase. Governor Quinn has proposed reducing the tax sharing portion to local governments. That estimate is $580,000 to a million dollars. We got a little bit of money when we got our, our population special census, about $298,000. All right, property tax revenue is one of our favorites right now. All right, interesting little graph. Top line, obviously, is the net property taxes. You'll see the library share in red, the pensions, pensions are set actuarially, net property ta-, then you'll see the net general fund continuing to go down as we keep our levy flat, and the other pieces of the general fund rise, the portion that goes to the general fund decreases. All right, next page are the details of that. You'll see all for, clear back to 2003, just mostly some interesting reading, but what it shows you is how our levy has changed. Let's go to the next page, kind of fun. Property tax expected, the rates are starting to climb for us. Each one cent is worth $50,000. Let's go to the next page, changes in assessed valuation. All right, we've seen the continued decline. Matter of fact, you know, we're down to the '09 numbers, notwithstanding Carl, fourteenth, 2014 estimate is with Carl, and a 1.5% decrease on top of that gets us down to about 500 million. We haven't been that low since between '06, '07. So...
Can you say that again? I missed.
I'm sorry.
Can you repeat that, please?
Sure. The 2014 estimate with the 61 million of Carl coming off and about a 1.5% continued decrease in the rolls gets us down to about 500 million, which is around, if you look at that, we haven't been that low since about 2007.
So, what percentage would you say the, removing Carl from our assessed valuation, what percent decrease is that?
About 10%. A little more than 10%, but close enough.
That's with the 61 million?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, let's talk quickly. If all organizations that use real estate taxes as a primary revenue source plan on operating in the future like they've operated in the past, the Urbana homeowners tax bill obviously will rise, I think we could potentially break $10 for every hundred dollars of assessed valuation. That would be not this year's levy, but the year after that. That would drive the Urbana piece, if we stayed level to a dollar four forty-eight. But the whole total for everybody will get over $10. All right. The City of Urbana, most other entities adopted the pass for the Carl effect, except for this latest 1231 filing challenge. With no time to adjust, all the entities felt that impact. If all things stay the same in the future, this impact will immediately be passed on to the taxpayers. Many cities have worked with entities that are not on the tax rolls to obtain financing to provide police, fire, basic services. Many of these entities have also given back to other organizations as well. That's just part and parcel of a, a city like us where a, a large portion of our tax rolls are nonprofit. Without such agreements, the taxpayer picks up the brunt for every nonprofit in the community. If you note in the graph, if we go back in the graph, you'll see where if we keep the city levy flat and everything else goes up, general fund will continue to decrease. Now, interestingly enough, our rate has been as high as a dollar fifty-four in 2000. We worked very, took a number of years to squeeze that down and try to close that gap with Champaign, and it got pretty close, and now it's starting to slide away a little bit. Let's jump to the next page, let's get into the expense side, enough fund out of revenues. The information received with Ron's memo on January 10th continues to hold true. No revenues have hit a home run, and the spending predictions are still consistent. Our presented Carl surprised us, insurance increases appear unsettling, we have contract negotiations, and we remain wary of changes at the state and federal level. You've all heard that before. Those are not new issues, you've dealt with them for a number of years. Three ways to affect our future, more money, we continue to do what we do the way we do it and possibly do some more, more efficient, see the list below, and to do less. That's it. Those are the only three options we really have. You know, if we look into, number one, raise taxes and fees, review and rebalance. We brought, the mayor brought up the question about looking at the, the fines on the noise ordinance, we're planning to review literally every fee and fine we've got to try to get them updated and current and consistent. That doesn't mean just raise them, that means clearly have them be appropriate and relevant in relationship to other communities and what's appropriate. Some of ours are very old, some of ours get hit every year, some are right, some are wrong, but we really want to go through all of them and try to get a good, clean draw line in the sand. Obviously, so, and raising some taxes, some fees are, are not palatable. We're not going to do that. You're just not going to go out and just across the board raise all fees and fines, it's just not, not appropriate. Look for low-hanging fruit, there's always something else to look at. Push expenses to the future, I've talked to the department heads about pushing. We're at the last quarter of this fiscal year, things we push to next year allows us to smooth that hump a little bit and get a better sense of where we're at. Evaluate existing relationships. That's how we deal with other governmental units that bring some other work in-house, that send some work out of house, try to become more efficient. Buy time. We've been in the process of buying time for a number of years. It's not much of a solution by itself, but if we use the time to evaluate longer range options, then it has value, it has huge value for us. Define our delivery of core services. What do the citizens need now, and what does the city need to provide these services effectively and efficiently into the future? And then deliver core services, the most bang for the buck spent. It's not just about prioritizing, it's about making sure that we are doing what we want to do and why we're doing it. Last page, the maintenance pyramid, the ever-popular unbalanced pyramid that says, every year, your baseline grows, and that's the expectation for the next year is something more than that. So, the little byline under that is, every year's a new line in the sand, and there's no going back, or is there. So, without major changes, I don't think we can actually outrun our revenues with our spending needs. We have to clearly continue to evaluate, prioritize, and be efficient. The city's done an outstanding job of that in the past. It's not a rocket science of a challenge, it's just something we have to keep in mind. It's, you know, I, I, it's just part and parcel of, of having an organization that is responsible to the community. And it's, you know, the, the Carl thing is just one more interesting thing, but it's not the thing. You know, it's, we have, we have a number of challenges. Questions?
Charlie?
Yeah, Bill, thanks for being quick too. Good summary. What, remind me again, what, we have a $48 million budget total? It's our forty-four, forty-eight? What's...
It's, it's a little higher than that because this year we've got major grants coming in for Olympia, and then, of course, it kind of gets bumped into revenues, but we've got the, we've, we've got the bond issues. So, that bumps it up. So, let's call it net low 50s.
Okay.
Normally.
But, okay, and we, we take in, what, eight million a year in property tax?
Yeah.
Yeah, eight million?
Seven, seven million, 700,000, except we've routinely put away about 465,000 for Carl.
For Carl, okay, yeah.
So, we, lack of better term, we over-lebied for that.
Yeah, so what if, could we come up with a model that was not dependent, that had no property tax in it? And replace property tax with something else?
Yeah, but, that's a, that's when I talk about us starting to really think about our delivery of services, because at that point in time, you're gonna try it more tightly, like we've been doing, tying the delivery of the appropriate service to a fee that is appropriate for that service.
Exactly what I was thinking, yes.
So, that is, that's, that's that whole outreach issue, and we've seen a number of communities have tried to get at this of a number of different ways. You know, some of them call them pilot agreements, but nonetheless, you know, something in lieu of taxes, but it is trying to achieve that right balance. Can you do it? We can do it easier than, than the school can. I mean, we have more, I mean, one of the best, one of the changes, if you, if we go back twenty years, real estate taxes is a big piece of our revenue pie. It's not so big a piece now. Important, but it, but it doesn't define us. So, clearly, those things are doable, and I think frankly, if you look back, we've been doing parts of that over time. The challenge for this community is, is fairly simple. A large piece of our role is not taxable, and it just doesn't affect us, but it affects all our partners, it affects everybody we deal with that has a major dependence. That's, you know, that's the school district, and I'll use them the biggest, that's the library, you know, these are organizations that are, that are critical for our community, they are heavily dependent on it. So, the decisions we make and the way we approach these things, I think, has an impact on them also. Yes, sir?
Can we extend our ability along those lines and transfer those revenues to our partners?
We're home rule. I mean, the only, the only issue as we look at this is, you also have a, a major educational process to do with the people that are paying the property tax bill. I mean, they've got to understand the goal and how that money moves from this bucket across the here, and how it's appropriate and level, because that's, that's, that's that problem now is, is, as they look at those pieces through there, they envision that that section is somehow magically dealing with all of those related costs. And there's a couple of things we'll bring up as we go through the budgetary process that kind of looks to, as, when I talk about the relationships with other governmental units, that's part of that realignment process, is making sure people understand what we do. My contention is, I don't care how we spend our money at all. I care that people clearly understand the decisions that are made and are comfortable with the trade-offs that they are. Because our only issue right now is this, we have limited resources. So, how do we balance these, how do we use these? We can open one end up, but there's gonna be an expectation that comes with that, and we need to be able to make sure that we meet that challenge or whatever that expectation might be. Does that make sense? Okay.
Any other discussion, questions?
Oh, there'll be plenty later.
Well, there be no further business, this meeting stands adjourned.